I'll call the February 12th regular meeting of the City Council to order. May we have a closed session report?
Yes, there is nothing to report and the council voted to continue the closed session because not all items were completed within the closed session period to the end of the meeting tonight.
Okay, roll call please.
The record will show that all members are present.
Okay, would you all please rise for the pledge of allegiance led by Councilmember Rozansky and stand for the invocation by Peter DeHanes.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance to our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I do invite you into prayer. Wondrous God, Fountain of Life and Source of Goodness, you have made all that is and given us all we have. We are grateful and we thank you for the people of this beautiful place and for able, responsible leaders in the mutual regard which forms our civic life. Give us, we pray, your spirit of peace, justice, charity, wisdom, humor, and grace that we may find with one another the fulfillment of our humanity here in this lovely city. For you are gracious great lover of souls and to you we give glory and honor now and forever. Amen. Thank you Reverend Haynes, I've neglected to mention that you were from Saint Michael and All Angels Episcopal Church. Thank you very much. Okay, first item under presentations is a presentation on the Explorer, Police Explorer Competition.
Chief Klein, who is going to lead the remarks this morning, today?
This is our Explorer Post 1050. It's been part of the police department for over thirty years. It's open to kids fourteen to twenty-one and it's an opportunity for them to learn some life skills. It's part of Learning for Life connected to the Boy Scouts. Our explorers have been extremely important in us able to fulfill our mission over the last several years in assisting with the Centennial. They also are very active in all the special events we have throughout the city doing traffic control and have become quite popular, all the events. Part of that, the process that they have at the police department is we train them how to do police activities. Many of these people, some of them will go on to become police officers, but many won't. It's life skills that they're learning, leadership, how to be successful in whatever field they have. So they've been competing in tactical competitions for several years and have done extremely well, both county and state or national level. On August, I'm sorry, on January eighteenth, they were in Chandler, Arizona where they competed on nationwide competition with over one thousand police explorers and they came away with seven different trophies, including four first place. They did so well last year that they actually changed some of the rules of the competition to make it a little more difficult and they still stepped it up this year and did extremely well. So this is Police Explorer Post 1070, this is our competition team with Advisor Stan Bressler, Stephen Fong, and Lloyd Wiesnatt.
Okay, well I have a proclamation that I'd like to read and present to the Explorer Post. Whereas the Newport Beach Police Explorer Post 1050 was created in nineteen seventy-three and is comprised of young adults between the ages of fourteen to twenty-one, and whereas the Newport Beach Police Explorers are for young men and women who are interested in the field of law enforcement or other professional careers, and whereas on Friday, January eighteenth, two thousand and eight, the Explorers participated in an annual three-day tactical competition held in Chandler, Arizona where over one thousand explorers from across the nation competed, and whereas the Explorers captured four first-place trophies in the following categories: the five-person hostage rescue, ten-person drowned officer rescue, hostage negotiations, and the video satire of the show Cops. And whereas the Explorers captured a second-place trophy for their participation in a marijuana field raid, and whereas the Explorers captured a third-place trophy for their participation in a tubular bus assault. Now therefore, I Edward Selich, Mayor of the City of Newport Beach, do hereby proclaim that the following special recognition be given to Newport Beach Police Explorer Post 1050, commendation for their outstanding performance and witness whereof I have hereunto set my hand, cause the seal of the City of Newport Beach to be affixed this eleventh day of February two thousand and eight. If any of the parents want to come down and have their picture taken, go on down.
You know, Chief Klein, I experienced the same thing with our Boy Scout troop at Camp Re. You know, they started changing the rules of the events after we kept winning year after year. So I could sympathize with that.
That's a pretty good indication, you're doing a good job.
Exactly.
We may want him to do labor negotiations. Mr. Mayor, perhaps we could have each of the Explorers introduce themselves, at least give their names so there's some personal recognition.
Yeah, let's do that.
Hi, I'm Justin Edson and I'm eighteen and I go to Coron del Mar High School.
Hi, I'm Explorer Brandon Albright, I'm twenty and I go to Orange Coast Community College.
Hi, I'm Explorer Alex Gonzalez, I'm seventeen and I go to Newport Harbor High.
Hi, I'm Explorer Chloe Hanson and I am attending Coron del Mar High School and I'm fifteen years old.
Hi, I'm Trevor Lee and I'm fifteen and I go to Thor House School.
Hi, I'm Brian Arson, I'm sixteen and I go to Coron del Mar High School.
I'm Explorer Stephen Comp, I'm seventeen and I go to S H L School.
I'm Explorer Michael Serrallo, I'm fifteen and I go to Newport Harbor High.
Hi, I'm Explorer Danielle Serrallo, I'm fifteen and I go to Newport Harbor High School.
I'm Explorer Andrew Gordon, I'm eighteen years old and I go to Coron del Mar High School.
You're an outstanding group of young men and women and you really do our city proud. Thank you very much. Okay, our next presentation is recent code enforcement actions to abate nuisances. Code Enforcement Officer John Kapler.
Mr. Mayor, we recently had what we thought was an outstanding success on some code enforcement and John Kapler heads the Code Enforcement Division that is located under the City Manager's Office and we just wanted to share a short presentation about this particular situation.
Thank you Homer and good evening, Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers.
John Kapler, Code and Water Quality Enforcement Division. Councilmember Hen asked me to give this presentation originally. We, let me click on the next slide here. I was here in April of oh-seven and at that time the council and the City Manager's Office asked the Code Enforcement Division to take a little more proactive stance especially relative to nuisance abatement. At the same time, then Mayor Rozansky asked us to take a little more proactive stance on refuse issues. They're always a big problem in the peninsula, Coron del Mar, Balboa Island. So what we did was we implemented a couple projects, some background there, some of the current, I'll talk a little bit about some of the current projects we're working on. I want to touch a little bit on some public education and then kind of some challenges as these projects unfold, if you will. Back in April of oh-seven, I was here, we got some direction from you folks, we changed the Code Enforcement Council policy to give us a little more teeth and to allow us to be a little more proactive. And we also implemented the refuse abatement project and that was a result of that council meeting. A couple current projects, here's one on the peninsula, you can see the before and after, and pretty dramatic and I'd like to give some kudos to the property owner in this instance as well because this gentleman really did go above and beyond what would we require from the code. He realized that he's increasing his property value, he's preserving the neighborhood, and it was a very good project. Here's a view of the rear of the home. Another house a couple blocks away, again, kudos to this homeowner. He again, in my opinion, did a little above and beyond what would we require and that's greatly appreciated. Here's the rear of the home, excuse me. This one may not be as apparent and it didn't go as well as some of them. The before picture on the left is a duplex in Coron del Mar. It was illegally converted into six apartments. We've had some challenges with this homeowner, we've been in there on and off for probably ten years now. The homeowner has come into compliance, he scraped the home, he's in, he's got plans, he's got building permits, and he's building a brand-new duplex. So again, another project, we had a lot of complaints from the neighbors on this, there were a lot of people living there and we've gotten some really good feedback from the neighbors, so I wanted to pass this one on to you as well. Here's a home up in Newport Heights, had some hazardous materials, substandard structure, and again, a rather lengthy process. The homeowner has scraped the home, as you can see from the photo on the right, and is planning to rebuild, so another nice success story I'd like to share with you. And as a side note, the owner of this, they bought the home after her husband got out of World War II for, I think, four hundred and fifty dollars. Here's a rather recent project on Thirty-Nine Street, it was an illegal boarding house, most of you are probably aware of this. When I first was in this property inspecting, I counted seventeen beds, beds in closets, beds in living rooms, lots and lots of complaints from the neighbors and now lots of attaboys from the neighbors, if you will. So this was a real success and we're quite honestly, pretty proud of it. We're trying to do a little, a public education right now as well. On the left is a homeowner's newsletter for West Newport. We wanted to alert folks of the refuse abatement project and we've issued two-hundred-and-fifty-two notices to property owners to keep their alleyways clean, keep their trashcans, lids on trashcans put away. We're again, to my delight, getting pretty positive feedback and out of those two-hundred-and-fifty-two, we've got compliance on probably eighty percent of them. The refuse abatement projects, a little bit like painting the Golden Gate Bridge, we started in West Newport and we're working our way down the peninsula with plans to carry on to Balboa Island and then probably Coron del Mar Village. By the time we get through West Newport and halfway down the peninsula, seems like we have to go back and do it over again, but it is what it is. It's a, it just takes time to get compliance, but nonetheless, I am getting calls from homeowners. Most of them understand why we're there, they like the fact that we're there, so the project's going rather well. On the right is a Dave Kiff write-up for Homer's Newsletter and it's talking about, again, to let the residents know about, we're taking a little more proactive stance on nuisances, about the refuse abatement project. We spoke to the group home, the new group home ordinance, and illegal dwelling, and it's illegal dwelling and it's always a big deal for us. What I haven't shown up here is, I think for especially the refuse abatement project, summer's when we have our big problems, so I'm probably going to put something together in late spring. I want to get the word out to the short-term lodging permits, to the vacation rentals, to the property management companies, because we really receive lots and lots of complaints from residents in the summer. Vacation rental is filled up with friends and family, they invite down some more friends and family and before you know it, it's kind of a big mess, Sunday night they check out, go away, and we're stuck with it on Monday morning. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna try really hard to get some good public education out, to get some folks in compliance for summer and hopefully minimize. Here's some of the challenges as we've kind of implemented a few of these programs. Proactive enforcement, it's time-consuming, it just is what it is. Violations aren't always apparent, it's, I can't always drive down a street and pick out violations, there could be things like mods, variances, and encouragement permits, so it takes a little bit of time to research through some of these, perfectly fine with us, again, it just is what it is. We're also limited by what we can see from public right away, so we do have to rely on residents and homeowners, if they have a complaint that I can't see when I'm driving down the street, that they need to call me and let me know that complaint, we'll certainly follow up on it. Another, we've recently annexed West San Ana Heights and that's a really busy area for us and is gonna remain a busy area for probably the majority of this year. The refuse abatement project, again, I'm getting good feedback from the residents. One of my challenges is, or one of the challenges is, I was trying to think of a politically correct way to say this, but we have alley pickers, we have folks that go down looking for recyclables, things like that, and then they're not always gonna put the lid back on the trashcan when they leave and it is against code to do that, it's pretty tough for us to catch them. That's probably been my main polite complaint, if you will, from residents, was that I do try to keep my lids on my trashcans, John, but gosh, I have to go out and put them on every morning because people come through the alley and they're looking to pick up things. So I wanted to pass that on to you as well. Again, I touched earlier on the refuse abatement project, it is rather time-consuming. We've got, I need to give kudos to Brian Contino, he works for us part-time, twenty hours a week, and refuse abatement isn't the most glamorous project in the world, but Brian's working hard and he's doing a real good job on it and I've seen a difference. I drove around a little bit today before the council meeting, wanted to see what some of the problem alleyways that I know of look like and I can say things look a little bit better, so again, we're proud of that. I also, while I'm up here, want to give kudos to Matt Cozyline, he's the Code and Water Quality Enforcement Officer for West Newport and the peninsula where the majority of our code enforcement activity takes place and he's working hard and doing a really good job as well. My last slide is, I want to give viewers and residents our telephone number. I also want to let folks know that you can file a complaint with Code Enforcement online. If you go to the city's main webpage, in the upper right-hand corner, you can click on a little e-online services icon that dumps you into us and you can file a complaint with us that way. And with that, I'll open it up to any questions.
Councilman Hen.
First, John, kudos to you and your entire staff. This is not an easy job, to be fair and persistent and tenacious about getting people to do the right thing and I'm glad to see you're working on educational solutions and proactive solutions as well. You know, this is part of the city's broad-based effort to step up the profile of enforcement all across the board, illegal boarding houses, you know, that one that you had up there on Thirty-Nine Street, I'd probably call that a flop house, not an illegal boarding house. And so these are the kinds of things that we really need to be working on and improve the quality of life for everyone by getting that small minority of recalcitrants to do the right thing and to be good citizens and good neighbors to others. And you know, this whole effort, I think, has been very well supported by the results of the citizen survey that we're gonna talk about a little later tonight, from the perspective that it's been, improved code enforcement particularly, private property, nuisance abatement and those sorts of things, has been identified as an area that the citizens believe we could do even better on. And it's good to let people know that we've gotten actually a head start on that before we got those survey results in, and so thanks for doing a great job.
Thank you very much.
One thing I would suggest is I know Newport Shore's homeowners association is having their annual meeting, I think, March eighth.
Okay.
You know, if you'd like to get an invitation, I'd be more than happy to ask them to invite you, but you know, you get in front of those groups so they understand what you're doing and I'm sure you're gonna get a lot of support out of them and maybe they can, through their newsletters and things, get it out to their people, you know, that type of information that you're showing up there, in addition to the West Newport Beach Association that meets monthly. They'd probably like to hear a presentation on that, too.
Sure, thank you, and I'm slated for the Coron del Mar Homeowners Association mid-March, so yeah, no, great idea, thank you.
Central Newport, Lido Al, Peninsula Point.
I can take a traveling road show.
The list goes on.
Lido Sands.
Any other comments or questions, John? Thank you, John, good job.
Thank you.
Okay, Madam Clerk.
Notice to the public, the city provides a yellow sign-in card to assist in the preparation of the minutes. The completion of the card is not required in order to address the council. Speakers must limit comments to five minutes on agenda items. The council has the discretion to extend or shorten the time limit on agenda or non-agenda items. As a courtesy, please turn cell phones and pagers off or set them in the silent mode. This is a time for city council announcements or matters which council members would like placed on a future agenda for discussion, action, or report.
Councilman Hen.
Nothing.
Councilman Rozansky.
Nothing, thank you.
Mayor Pro Tim Daigle.
Yes, two of our elementary schools have been nominated for statewide distinction. East Bluff Elementary and Harborview Elementary were nominated for the California Distinguished School Award, and every year since nineteen eighty-five, the State Department of Education has spotlighted schools that post high marks on both state and federal standards and by any measure, economic, social, cultural education is the cornerstone of a great community and certainly here in Newport Beach, for many years, we stood proudly by our children in their public schools and the state is simply recognizing the deep, long-term commitment to education that is present in our community. And later this evening, we will have a proposed expansion of classrooms at Liberty Baptist, so thank you.
Okay, Councilwoman Gardner.
Yes, I'd like us to consider moving, a discussion of moving oral reports on committee matters. We go to a lot of committee meetings and I think that many of our residents would be interested, but by the time we get to them, it's always after our big discussions, and if it's a late night and the question is asked, everybody else looks at you with dagger eyes, like, don't say anything, don't say anything, we just wanna get out of here. So if we moved it in front of that, we could get some, our reports in, as I say, I think the residents in general would like that. And am I the one who wants to make this terrible noise with my microphone?
Homer, it might be that portable mic that was turned on there.
Mr. Mayor, we would have to, I think, adopt a resolution in order to change the sequence of the meetings, not that we couldn't do that, but it isn't as easy as just saying, let's do it for the next.
Oh, I understand that, so I was just wondering if anybody else was interested in that, that we could bring it back or something like that, or whether I'm the only one that thinks it's a great idea.
Does anyone object to considering that idea?
I think it's a good idea, I think a lot of really fine work's being done at the committee level and...
Okay, well, why don't you put it on agenda? Okay, Councilman Curry.
Just to remind everyone again that we're in the final stages of fundraising for the Marines Memorial, which will be dedicated on Memorial Day in May two thousand and eight. This is going to be a great tribute that will last through the generations for the Marines of One-One. And I mention it tonight because four hundred miles north of us in Berkeley, the city council is debating the reconsideration of a very misguided ordinance that was recently adopted to oust the Marine Corps recruiters from their downtown office and to provide a radical protest group, a space to protest in front of the Marine recruiting station and basically tell them that they're not wanted in the city of Berkeley. And I can't think of a more defined contrast between how the Marines are revered and treated in our city and how they're being treated in Berkeley. Thank you.
Councilman Webb. And I have nothing. Okay, next on our agenda is the consent calendar. Councilwoman Gardner, anything to pull?
No.
Councilman Curry.
No items.
Councilman Webb.
None.
Councilman Hen.
None.
Councilman Rozansky.
Nothing to pull, I'd just like to register, no vote on item number three.
Okay, Mayor Pro Tim Daigle.
None, Mr. Mayor, I think three's gonna get pulled off anyway.
Okay, I have none. Staff?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, several items. Item number nine, I would like that removed, we're not sure that, when we're gonna bring that one back. Item number ten, the retiree medical program, would like to continue that one. And item thirteen, I'd also like to pull that because we are looking at a presentation tonight, I wanted to get that on the agenda early because the gentleman who's providing the presentation has a flight to catch later tonight.
Okay, anyone from the public want to pull any items?
Number four, just for a request, please.
Number four.
That's for banning.
Okay.
Number three, I'd like to pull number three.
Number three, okay.
And I would like to see a little bit more update on twelve and thirteen, just what's going on.
So then we got twelve, too. Yeah, Homer did.
Okay, anyone else? Is there anything left?
This is a Tesla.
Go for a motion here.
It's getting increasingly complex. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve items one to thirteen. We'll be pulling items three, four, twelve, thirteen, and then we'll be removing from the agenda items nine and ten.
Okay, please vote.
Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, then it would be my request that we take item number thirteen on consent out of order.
Out of order, okay, we'll do item number thirteen first then.
Mr. Mayor, I think we've talked a couple of times at the city council about a, basically, an organizational improvement effort. The first step of that would be to doing a customer satisfaction survey, that survey has been accomplished and tonight, the council and the community is going to hear a report from Chris Tatum, who works for ETC, and they are the people that did the survey and will talk about the results and walk us through those results.
Great, it's a pleasure to be here. As the city manager indicated, I'm Chris Tatum with ETC Institute. Our firm is based in Kansas City, but we do work across the country. And this first chart I put up here is just to kind of put into context, I'm gonna be making a lot of comments this evening about how Newport Beach stacks up to other communities across the country. Our firm has data from more than four hundred cities and counties across the United States. About a hundred and fifty of those participate in our Direction Finder survey, which contains a core set of questions which were included on the resident survey that we did here in Newport Beach. So when I mentioned that Newport Beach either ranks above, ranked below, that's some of the basis for my interpretive comments. Tonight, what I'm gonna be doing is talking about three surveys that were conducted. One was of the community at large, or of your residents. We also then did surveys of the business and development community. Most of my comments tonight are gonna focus on the resident survey, but I will touch on the other surveys just to make sure we have a chance to review them all this evening. Let me start with the resident survey. It's oftentimes is, once I leave, then the community's stuck with the survey and you wanna know, are we really making good decisions? Is this really representative of the community? So one of the things I want to do tonight is just assure you that it is. One of the things that we did is we randomly selected three thousand households in the city to receive the survey. For a survey of this length and complexity, typically we consider a twenty percent response rate a pretty good return rate and oftentimes you can compare that to voter turnout at local elections and that's oftentimes even better than you see at local elections. For this survey, we actually had about twenty-eight percent respond, we had a total of seven-hundred-and-eighteen actually complete the survey, so we felt very good about that. And what's more impressive is the fact is that the high response rate comes in a community where people aren't dissatisfied with things. Oftentimes I see high response rates where there's lots of problems and that motivates people to fill out the surveys. In this case, there's generally contentment, as you see as we go through the survey results, so that suggests that people want to be engaged and want to be involved and I think that's a great thing. The overall results aren't perfect, they have a precision or margin of error, as the media typically calls it, about plus or minus three and a half, four percent, at the ninety-five percent confidence level. That means if we did the survey a hundred times, ninety-five times out of a hundred, you'd see these same results within about three or four percent. So again, not perfect, but very good data for decision-making. In addition, we did some GIS maps to let you see... In addition, we did some GIS maps to let you see how people in different parts of the city rated different issues, and I'm also going to talk about comparisons of how the city stacks up to both national and some regional norms. 10 years ago, when I used to go on doing surveys, I used to always get a question by somebody on the council or community, is how do you know we really represented people in our part of the city? So now we GIS map basically the address of the respondent's home. And as you can see here, the distribution of dots, if you match it up to a distribution that's provided by the U.S. Census Bureau that shows the population density of the city, where you see more dots, you'll see more residents. One of the things that we did to help the city interpret the data is we broke the city down into about eight or nine geographic areas, each of which has about 60 or more respondents. That way, when you're looking at different colored areas on the map, you can feel that they are statistically valid, within a precision of about plus or minus 10%. So again, the error is much greater, but it does give you a sense for whether or not there really is a difference in some parts of the city. So that's essentially what I'm going to be showing you. I'm not going to go through all the maps, there's dozens and dozens of them in the reports, I'm just going to highlight a few as I go through the presentation. Kind of starting off, the survey is designed to kind of help you sense, what do people think about the overall perception and quality of life in the city? Those are really designed to be strategic indicators as you move forward. We then ask people to rate major categories of services, and then we get into each of the major departments and ask people to rate and prioritize those as well. But when we ask people what they thought about Newport Beach as a place to live, visit, work, retire, one of the things that stood out to me when I looked at this chart is the absence of red. And you might say, well, why is that a big deal? Well, we color-code the charts so that blue is good and red is bad. And so when you look at the charts, the blue shows positive ratings, those are excellent or good. The red shows below average or poor ratings. And when you look at how people rate this community, there's very little discontentment with any areas. You can see, even when it comes to how the city is moving with regard to the right direction, for every person that tells you that the city isn't going in the right direction, which is 9%, remember that there's eight people out there that you probably haven't heard from, because over 70% think the city is moving in the right direction. In addition, we have some general indicators about what people feel about the safety, quality of life, quality of city services, just the character of neighborhoods, and how well the city is planning for growth. And you'll see that there's a little more concern with the planning for growth, which I'm going to talk about, but it's not from my opinion, an abnormally high number. In fact, last night, I was in a community where the percentage of people who are dissatisfied was about 42, 43%, and much, much bigger concern. So given the issues you have, it's something I think that it's important for you to pay attention to, but it's not alarming from my perspective. When we talk about the GIS maps, and the reason I'm not going to spend lots of time, is the GIS maps are designed to really assess service equity. In other words, are you doing a fairly good job throughout the city delivering different services, and/or are perceptions of the city fairly similar from one part of the city to another? What we've done is we've taken those districts that I showed you a few slides ago, and we've shaded the mean rating various colors. In this case, dark blue is a very high rating, or typically indicates satisfied or very satisfied. If you see an off-white area, it's more average. If you see orange or red areas, it's dissatisfied. And when it comes to the overall quality of services provided by the city, you can see the entire city is in blue. Same thing is true when it comes to people's perceptions of the character of their neighborhood. When it comes to how well the city's planning for growth, you'll notice that there's a little area out here that's a little more concerned about it than the rest of the city, but all in all, most of the ratings are fairly good. Quality of life rates well, perceptions of safety in the city, all in all, are very positive. When you see how Newport Beach stacks up to the rest of the state of California, and also to national averages for similar-sized cities, one of the things that you've got to be very proud about, and the piece that probably defines the overall survey for me, is how did people rate the overall quality of city services? 87% of the people surveyed gave positive ratings. Nationally, the average is 53%, which is shown in orange. California, on average, runs at 61%. And just think from my perspective, for every city I give a presentation that's above, I usually am giving presentations where it's below. I almost never see 20, 30, let alone 34% above the national average. It's quite a feat. Perceptions of quality of life are also significantly better, but you can see when it comes to issues related to planning for growth, more average. And I think that's important, because when we look at things like the business survey, image is very important to the community, so I think the concern that residents have about the future means a lot to them. So how you plan in those sensitive areas for residents is something for the council and the community to be addressing. When we then broke down the survey into specific categories of city services, we asked residents to kind of rate the different areas by major department. We asked them to rate public safety, libraries, parks and recreation, maintenance of your beaches and bays, water supply, your streets and infrastructure, customer service, communication, codes and ordinances, and traffic flow. And you can see across the board, no real major issues. In other words, you don't see a lot of dissatisfied ratings. The one area that stands out a little bit is the dissatisfaction with traffic flow at 17%, but again, in the same community I mentioned last night, they had 28% giving positive ratings, and you can see your results have 61% positive ratings. When you look at the individual ratings for some of these major categories throughout the city, you can see that overall perceptions of public safety are fairly high throughout the city. Same thing is true for parks and recreation, which you can see by this chart being all in blue. The nice thing about the maintenance of infrastructure, this is often a real difficult one for local communities to address, because oftentimes, you'll have older areas or newer developing areas. You've done a pretty good job of keeping the perceptions of the quality of infrastructure at about the same level throughout the city, at least from a resident perspective. You'll notice that the entire city shaded in the same color. Same thing for water supply issues. When it comes to the enforcement of codes and ordinances, overall, generally pretty good throughout the city. Customer service from city employees ranks high throughout the city. Communication, traffic flow, and your library is as good as it gets, which you see by the dark blue. And same thing with your city beaches and bays, and you might say, boy, this is really boring, because it's all blue. The reality is it's something you should take a lot of pride in. You didn't get there by accident. There's lots of communities around the country that would really, you know, they're going to put you down as the top target for them to which to strive. Your challenge is really going to be, how do you maintain that? And how do you end up maintaining that homogeneity in the perception of the responses throughout the city, where you don't have a lot of inequality in the way residents view the city services being delivered? When you see how you stack up nationally, you can see on this, the blue bar is Newport Beach. Again, the red is California, and the orange is the United States. You can see for each of the categories that were assessed, you rank above the national average. You can see you're slightly below the average for California on code enforcement, but has already been mentioned, that's something that you're trying to address, but compared to the rest of the United States, you lead it.
Can I ask a question?
Oh, absolutely.
Real quickly on code enforcement?
Sure.
How do we interpret that? Because, say, I'm a dog owner, and I may think it's great because I never see the dog control, and someone else may think it's great because he's always calling in and getting dogs picked up. So how would we, if we want to improve our code enforcement, how do we interpret it?
Great question, and actually, what I'm going to do is, right now, these are the overall ratings by department, and a little bit, I'm going to break them down and actually show you the results. We have about six or seven aspects of code enforcement that were assessed. But I think you should take a lot of pride in how well you communicate with residents, being 19% above the California average, so you're doing a better job keeping folks informed. And also the customer service. This is sometimes, you know, the employees get the brunt of all the complaints and the problems, but this is an opportunity to really, basically, let the employees know how good they're doing, because when they actually have interaction with residents, most residents feel pretty good about that. In fact, they're 22% above the national average. And I don't want to spend too much on the benchmarks, but I know a few of you were interested in it, so I also wanted to give you a sense for where you stack up on the range of several medium-sized cities that were in our database. And these items that are underlined, quality of life, parks and recreation, customer service, and your efforts to keep residents informed, are all in the top 25% of the communities in our database. Code and ordinances is still a little above average, but not quite in the top 25%. So that may be, as a community, what are you setting for your standards, what do you want to be like in the future? And that's where you can help use some of this data, perhaps, to set performance goals for yourself as you move forward. Another thing we asked residents is what they thought the top priority should be. And management of traffic flow on city streets was at the top of the list, followed by maintenance of streets, and also taking care of your beaches and bays. You know, you'll notice that the issue about traffic flow is at the very top, but it doesn't stand out by itself. Communities that have real problems with traffic flow, they might see 80% of their residents pick it as a top issue. You'll notice that you have several issues that are statistically about the same, particularly those top three, and that suggests that there's just as many people who want you to invest in certain, you know, in maintenance of bays as they do for traffic flow issues. So I think that suggests that you have your resources pretty well aligned now. And when you see this information, one of the things that we've done is we've created some quadrants for you, so that you can actually look at the services from left to right, based on the relative importance. The items over here on the right are most important to residents, the ones on the left are least important. And as you go from the bottom to the top, this is the relative level of satisfaction. The things that we oftentimes suggest you focus on are the items in the bottom right. In other words, if you invest in these areas, because they're more important to residents, and right now, the perceived level of service delivery is lower, you're likely to have a bigger impact on overall satisfaction by addressing these issues than you will here. Doesn't mean you don't take care of your libraries, but if you spend a lot of money on your libraries, you're not likely to increase satisfaction levels significantly, whereas if you address issues related to maintenance of traffic, or maintenance, and also traffic flow, you're more likely to make residents more satisfied as you move forward. Some of the specific areas we looked at were public safety. You'll notice that the overall satisfaction or perceptions of safety in the city are very high. The highest level of unsafe is in some of your commercial and business areas after dark, but there really aren't many people in the city that don't feel safe. And when you look at this map, we asked people about their feeling of safety when they're walking in their neighborhood during the day, and the entire city is in dark blue. However, when we ask people about the issue related to safety in commercial and business areas after dark, you'll notice that there is an area that does feel a little less safe. So as you move forward, you might want to take a look and see, are there some issues that are different there than the rest of the city? Doesn't mean that there are, but the people who live there, for whatever reason, feel a little less safe than the people throughout the...
Chris, question for you. When I see that yellow, is that a neutral?
That's a neutral, right, yeah.
Okay. So there's not a lot of commercial areas in that area?
Yeah, but that means that they may be, when they go to other places, they feel less safe, because maybe they don't have them around them. I mean, that can be, and as you look at the data, that's one of the things that you want to take a look and keep in mind, is if there are no commercial areas in that area, the people there, when they move outside their comfort zone, they don't feel as safe in the rest of the city, and that could be the very reason that they're less safe. But as a result, if you end up having something that happens in commercial areas, that area is more likely to end up responding, or perhaps be negative toward the city as a result. The other thing that we took a look at on the survey has to do with issues related to, just, oh, you can see some of the comparisons, all of the areas the city rated above average when it comes to safety of residents during the day. We looked at some of the specific issues related to how well services were being delivered, and you can see, really, across the board, there wasn't anybody who was dissatisfied with how quickly fire personnel respond to emergencies. We also had very little dissatisfaction with all of the items. The only area that had some dissatisfaction of any significance has to do with the frequency of police patrols in their neighborhood. You can see 15% gave negative ratings there. And when you see how that kind of stacks up, you'll notice that you're more average. In other words, Newport Beach is setting the standard in so many areas, that's one area where you're actually 1% below the national average when it comes to the visibility of police. When it comes to efforts to prevent crime, though, it's not an issue. So that's sometimes you have to take a step back and say, does it matter to our residents that they don't see the police? And maybe it doesn't, maybe it does, but that is something that you can see that you're more average. But overall, when it comes to efforts to prevent crime, you're almost 30% above the national average, 28% above the California average. When you see this on the ranges, you're near the very top. In fact, when it comes to, I should have, you had the police up here before, should have commended them this, they actually set a new standard of the 36 cities that we compared you against. You now have the top rating of all those cities for your efforts to prevent crime. You're also number one with your efforts to enforce traffic laws. So there's two areas that the city should be very, very proud of. And at the end of the day, when we put the information into the matrix for public safety, the only issue that really stands out is the frequency of some of the neighborhood patrols, which you can see here at the bottom right. You'll see efforts to prevent crime is something residents care a lot about, but you're doing a relatively good job at this point in time. When it comes to your parks and recreation facilities, one of the things we wanted to do is get a sense for how many people use your facilities, and you have a very high utilization among your residents. We asked how many people had visited a park during the last year, and you can see that 88% of your population had used it at least once. Nationally, it runs about 70%. When we asked people whether or not they'd been to a beach, you can see that 93% of the people had been to the beach at least once during the last year. And when it comes to your library visitations, you can see that 78% of the people surveyed had gone to the library at least once. And again, nationally, that runs about 67 to 70%. So your utilization of your city facilities is actually higher than we see in most other places. There was very little concern with any of the areas on the facility and recreation assessment. You can see the overall perception of how well you take care of parks, 90% of your residents gave positive ratings. None of the areas that were rated had more than 10% dissatisfaction. And when you see how you stack up, your walking and biking trails rated 21% above the national average, and 19% above the national, or the California average, and also your programs for seniors rated significantly above average as well. And that may be contributed to other reasons you're rated so well as a place to retire, you're just helping support some of those needs for the older population in the community. Also, on the maintenance of parks, this is oftentimes the one area that communities fall down, is they don't take care of what they have, and you've got nine out of 10 residents giving positive ratings in that area. When it comes to the standards, you can see for your walking and biking trails, you're in the top 25%. Your outdoor athletic facilities is the area that you're more average compared to other communities, and you're a little above average with regard to the number of parks that people that you have. And when it comes to the issues where you can make the biggest impact, even though your overall satisfaction with walking and biking trails is extremely high, it's still an area that people support taking care of and investing. Outdoor athletic facilities is likely to be an issue for people, the younger populations in the community, and whether or not you have space to do that, that's one of the things that oftentimes becomes a difficult, is acquisition of land in areas where property value is very, very high. We also took a look at issues related to utilities and your general services. There were real and even low concerns with residential trash, water, or sewer and wastewater services. You had fewer than 5% of the people surveyed gave negative ratings for those. And you can see with your sewer and wastewater services, you can see generally rated above the California average. This is a big deal in many communities across the country. In fact, this is oftentimes the number-one problem in communities that I visit, and you can see, that's one of the reasons nationally, it ranks average about 64%. Residential trash collection is something that typically ranks pretty well at 82%. You rate 10 points above the national average, and your water service at 89% is 18% above the national average, and also above the California average. Code enforcement, which was what you were asking about earlier, we asked people to rate several issues: water quality regulations, enforcement of animal control, what people thought of business operating conditions, upkeep of commercial and private property, and then also the cleanup of debris. And you'll see the areas that have the most dissatisfaction are the animal control and the upkeep of debris and private property. There's more neutral ratings, and when you interpret the neutral ratings, don't look at that as necessarily being bad, it all depends on what your standard is. Thank you very much. The issue about the neutral ratings, typically, when we interpret it, is that people haven't had a real positive or negative experience, so they're okay with that. But if you're a high-performing community, your standard might be to have a standard that's better than just being okay. When you look around the city, you'll see that the issue about cleanup of private, debris on private property gets slightly lower ratings in this area. Water quality regulations is pretty much the same throughout the city. Same thing where it comes to exterior maintenance of residential property, again, this area has a slightly lower ratings than the rest of the city, as well as the perception of the exterior maintenance of commercial property. So there aren't a lot of differences, even in the shading, you'll see that this is a little lower, but it's not dramatic. It's not that the rest of the city's in dark blue, and this is a light, you know, the off-white, it's just basically one level of difference. So again, but it may identify that there are some differences that perhaps if you address, it may be needing more code enforcement in this part of the city on those particular issues. When you try to identify what you should do with regard to code enforcement, you'll see that even though animal control across the board, it was relatively less important to the residents, the areas that you can probably have the biggest impact have to do with the cleanup of debris on private property and the upkeep of the exterior of residential property. Those are the two things that if you focus the most on will probably have the most impact on code enforcement over the next couple of years. Communication issues, the top source for people and information is your local newspaper, followed by the city manager's newsletter, which reaches out to about half the city. You can see the website reaches about one in four households, and that's a little above average. Nationally, it's about 23% of the communities are using their websites or have residents report using it. When you look at how you stack up, overall, the perceptions of information very high, but when it comes to a couple of your tools, you'll see the webpage, this is the only item in the entire survey that ranks significantly below average. So you're seeing them go through dozens and dozens of items, the only area is the webpage. Everything else is above average. There's a few things that are average, but that's, you know, that's the one minor thing that stands out. Television table, you'll see ranks a little below the rest of California, but still is above the national average. And when you look at some of the specifics about overall perceptions of how well you keep residents informed, I guess I just went through that. So the last area I'm going to look at is maintenance. And maintenance, from my perspective, having done hundreds of these, is the most important area to rate in. If you rate well in maintenance and you take care of your basic infrastructure and you also have a safe community, those two things done right, you tend to be a pretty successful community in the eyes of your residents. You fail to keep residents safe, don't take care of your infrastructure, you'll have a lot of problems. And residents here feel safe and they feel like you do a good job with your infrastructure. You can see there's very little dissatisfaction with the condition of streets, very little dissatisfaction with issues related to lighting, cleanliness of stormwater drains and so forth. And when you see when you stack up on your maintenance issues, when it comes to this condition of streets and neighborhoods, you rank 22% above the rest of California. And the overall cleanliness of streets and public areas ranks 20% above the national average. And really, you're statistically way out ahead when you look at the next chart where you're setting standards or in the top 25% of the four key areas that we compared you to other communities. So maintenance, public safety are usually the two areas that can really break cities. In both of those areas, you're really setting a standard. When it comes to areas of maintenance to focus on, overall, you're doing fairly well in everything, but we sort of force people to pick something to work on. And taking care of your beaches is probably the one thing that you can probably do a little better. If you emphasize some issues there, you're more likely to get some return on satisfaction with residents. And then finally, satisfaction with customer service, which isn't really a department area, but overall, what do people think about dealing with resident city, or what do residents think about dealing with customers across the board? You'll notice that there is some dissatisfaction. I found that in most cases, there's always going to be some people who aren't satisfied when they call the city. In other words, if they had a water issue that they didn't pay and their water got turned off, they might think it's the city's fault and never be satisfied unless the city waives their bill. But we do find that there is a standard of about 10 to 15% that you don't get much lower than that. And when you notice here, that's about where you're at. You kind of across the board got a group of folks that probably aren't going to be satisfied with service because you don't respond to their needs, but you don't have any major areas that stand out. The one that I look at the most is the issue related to how well your issue was handled. Typically, there's about one in four people are dissatisfied with the city. Here, it's only 18% in Newport Beach. The last thing we asked people on the resident survey was just to get some feedback about whether or not people had preferences for having the city or local government provide services versus having private providers. So we asked them, assuming there was no difference in the level of service and no significant cost savings, how would they feel about non-city employees providing various services? You can see there's some real heartburn on the public safety issue. In the rest of the cases, by the majority agree or think that the city should, you know, in other words, there's really a lot of folks here that have, I guess about a third of the folks here feel strongly about doing it. There's about a quarter over here against it. And then you have a lot of folks who probably, if it worked out, might consider it. Not real passion on either side, except for the public safety where you have a majority that are just against it. In other words, that are in favor. When I look at the somewhat agree, that kind of depends on the situation and exactly what you're going to be doing. Just to summarize the resident survey, as I said, overall satisfaction was 34% above the national average. You might just take that for granted, but most communities would covet that as a major prize. When you look at the comparative strengths, all your utilities rated above average, most areas of parks and recreation, all areas of maintenance, most of your areas of public safety, your efforts to keep residents informed, quality of life and safety, all rated significantly above average. The only areas that you rated below were the webpage and then the other items there listed. Even though they are identified as bigger concerns, they were still within the margins of what is typical for most communities. When it comes to priorities, making sure you don't overlook the traffic flow issue. And you might say, by gosh, you know, do we have to be alarmed about that? Traffic flow is typically the issue that desirable communities have when they don't have other major problems. People want to come here, people are visiting here, that's a sign of a healthy city. Cities that are dying do not have traffic flow issues. So if you have a problem, that's probably the problem to have. But also don't make sure you don't neglect the streets and the other infrastructure related to the city's water supply. People care a lot about those. And public safety, address the issue about the patrols. Doesn't mean you have to do a lot more patrols, but there might be education, there could be concerns over time that that results to if you're not responsive to it, at least in some way necessarily. Doesn't mean you put more police patrols out there, but at least letting residents know why they may not see police officers as frequently. And you can see the items of facility, recreation, and code enforcement to focus on over the next couple of years. So I know it's a lot of information, and I feel like kind of a broken record telling you how great you are, but the reality is the city has not got here by accident. You must have had good leadership, made good decisions, investment over time, so that you can get to the point where you are performing very well. But with that said, the real challenge is how do you sustain that over time? And also, how do you make sure that you can respond to resident needs as they come up and change from one period to the next, which will certainly happen? Anybody have any questions on the resident survey?
Yeah, Chris, as you've done a lot of these surveys, overall, where would you think Newport Beach ranks percentile-wise? Ninetieth percentile?
Easily the ninetieth, perhaps in the 95th or above.
Of all the cities that you surveyed?
Yeah, I mean, I would say, I can stand here and tell you without calculating it, you're easily in the top 10%. I could probably find out you might be. You know, in the, the question I look at is overall satisfaction with city services, that question that's at 87% versus a national average of 53%. You don't get 34%. I mean, that's more than a whole quartile above the national average. And prior to this survey, the highest levels had been in the low 80s. And last year, we've had a couple of folks, Tim B. actually scored 88%, and I presented that this morning. So it's interesting, I'm in two cities on the same day that set of new standards, but you know, it's definitely in the top 10%. And if it's important, I can, you know, figure out if it's the top 5% or not.
Would you figure that out?
Sure, I'll do that for you.
Any other questions on the residential portion?
Right. Well, I just might briefly hit the business survey. I don't want to spend quite as much time. There weren't as many questions on that, but just to kind of let you know that you're serving residents, but you also have a big business community, and it's important as well. So we randomly surveyed 30 businesses to see what they thought about various issues. Some of the questions were similar to what are on the resident survey. And we had a pretty good distribution based on the years that the businesses have been located, based on the type of business. So we felt we had a decent cross-section, that we didn't survey hundreds of them. Sometimes when you pull a group that's randomly selected of 30, you at least get statistically significant data, and that was our goal here. And what you'll notice is when we asked people to rate their satisfaction with the same types of issues, we asked residents perceptions of safety, quality of life, image. The business community was just as satisfied as the residents. When we asked them to rate the overall satisfaction with city services, the business community was also just as, not in some cases, more satisfied than residents. You'll notice that 100%, every single one of them gave positive ratings for emergency medical services, and there was no dissatisfaction when it comes to police or your water and sewer services. So all in all, the business community feels good. But the difference is, is the business community, unlike the residents that are a little worried about traffic flow and street maintenance, you'll notice that the business community tends to care more about your public safety services. You'll see that police and fire at the top of their list, then maintenance and emergency medical services. So it's important when you talk to business leaders that you keep the public safety piece in mind, even though residents tend to focus on other issues. Two different audiences and two different desires for priorities.
Is that a typical response you see
Absolutely. Businesses care about security. If they're selling, you know, they got retail outlets, they care about it a lot. And if they don't feel secure, they'll often move to other communities. And so the fact that they feel safe is a great sign for long-term. The other thing is, we just wanted to get some feedback for you, you know, as you look forward to the future, what do they think about the business area that they're located in? Most gave positive ratings to the appearance, and that's probably not a real surprise for this community. But the thing that might be impressive to you is that eight out of 10 felt that you're a business-friendly community. And so that's a real healthy sign when you're trying to work and attract new businesses in the future. And then we asked people at the end of the day, what are the reasons that are going to keep them here? And it's the city's image is at the top of the list. And that is unique to Newport Beach. Most of the time, it has issues related to low crime rate, access to train employees, things like that. People care about your image. And I think because of that, how you even deal with the development community, which is our next survey, is important for you to address because your business community wants this to have a very high-profiled image. It wants to be the desired place. And that's, I think, one of the things that you have to keep in mind is you plan for your future. To summarize the business survey, just like with the residents, very high satisfaction levels. There were only three services that were assessed that had more than 10% dissatisfaction. And frankly, this is just my standard kind of presentation, but it was two had 11% and one had 12%. So nothing that I consider to be real problems. And the police, fire, and street maintenance are the three areas to keep focusing on. And you should let folks know when they're thinking about coming here that 80% of the businesses here think this is a business-friendly community. I think that's a good message to put out, get to your chamber and other organizations. Any questions on the business survey? If not, the last one, I'll talk a little bit about the developer survey. And there are, of all the surveys, this one has some of the most challenges as you look forward. We did, again, a random sample of 30 developers or representatives from the development community. We had a list of about 78 or 80 who had interacted with the city in the last year, so we had a pretty high percentage of them do the survey. And this just gives you a kind of a sense for the interaction. Most of the people we talked to had interacted with the city for different issues, whether it be building permits or land use, planning approvals, public works permits. So it was a fairly knowledgeable group that we spoke with. And then we essentially had them rate six different areas of the city's development review process. The planning commission staff, plan check that's done by the planning department, public works, fire, plan check that's done by the permitting process in the building department, and then inspection services. And I'll just briefly highlight some of the findings from each of those. You'll see when it comes to planning commission staff, the overall perception of the technical competence and how fairly people are treated is relatively high. The concern that the folks here had was how easy it was to contact some staff that had authority to make decisions, and then also the speed of responses. There are some concerns about that. So those are things at least for that group to be conscious of. When it comes to issues related to plan check staff in the planning department, you'll see, again, the speed of response to inquiries about applications, four in 10 of the people we talked to were dissatisfied with that. One in three, again, had some difficulties getting feedback from someone who had what they could believe that was authority to make decisions. And then again, the ease of contact. So I think when it comes to the planning group, how easy are they to get in touch with, that's something that should certainly be taken a look at. In addition, we asked them whether or not the staff in the planning department who checks their applications usually identifies most of the changes in their initial review. Two out of three said yes, one in three said no. And then we asked them how many times or how many rounds do they typically need before receiving sign-off? And you can see that the combined that said three or more was 53%. So again, depending on what the standard is you're trying to shoot for, that's something to at least be conscious of, that the development community is looking at that as a potential concern. What's nice of this data is they evaluated six different areas. So that gives me a sense that the people were fairly honest because they evaluated each of the areas a little differently. When it comes to public works, you notice there's less dissatisfaction. The issue in public works suggests that how consistently codes are applied. A little more concern there, but for the most part, there really wasn't much dissatisfaction with public works process. Seven out of 10 felt like they identified all the issues the first time. And when it comes to the percentage of people who had to go through multiple rounds or three or more rounds, you can see now it was just 35% of the people responded indicated they did three or more rounds. So when we looked at the fire, fire had almost no dissatisfaction. Again, a little concerned about consistency of codes, but that's only one out of seven respondents. So I think the fire is doing a very good job meeting the development community's needs. 81% felt that all of their issues were identified the first in the initial review. And when it comes to the percent that said they had to do more than three, it was just 14% when it comes to fire. When it comes to the plan check and the permitting in your building department, you can see here there's more dissatisfaction across the board. So this is probably another area to take a look at. Again, some of the issues about how easy it is to contact and the speed of responses, you can see 59% were dissatisfied with speed of responses to inquiries. And the overall perceptions of fairness sometimes is a reflection of that. In other words, if it's taking too long, you start to feel maybe some people are getting priority over others and it's not equitable. So again, I think in this department, looking at the speed as well is important. And you can see that only 48% felt that they identified most of the issues during their initial review. But when it comes to the overall more than three or more, you can see you had 70% of the folks indicate three or more. So again, depending on what the standards are that you're shooting for, there could definitely be some opportunities for improvement there. When it comes to inspection services, much like the others, there are really no areas of significant dissatisfaction here. And one of the things that I did is I went ahead and put this all kind of into an overall matrix. I'm going to come back in just a second, but looking at the six different departments, we looked at how many of the areas that were assessed had more than 20% dissatisfaction. And you can see plan check, both in the building and also planning department, and the issues related to responsiveness and how long that takes. And I think if the city focuses on something, that's really where you can make a difference. And I had the unfortunate privilege of presenting to the Metropolitan St. Louis Sewer District a year ago and gave them almost the same answers. And over the last year, they've addressed how easy it is to get in touch with people, made themselves more accessible, and they saw their ratings go up 20 and 25% across the board, just by making the employees in the process more accessible to their development community. At the end of the day, when we look at the overall results, you can see that the ease of completing the process and the length of time are the biggest concerns for the development community. And that's because it costs money. They've got money tied up in projects, and the longer it takes, they're losing money while they're waiting for things to happen, which is probably one of the reasons, and I think it's a positive opportunity for the city, is that three out of four developers are willing to pay more to help expedite the process. So that may be another opportunity to raise some additional funds so you can actually equip and get the staff available to make the process go faster. So overall, when you look at the process, I really think the plan check is the piece that you got to take a look at, how easy and how responsive. But I also think that you have to balance the image of the city. Is it difficult because of the high standards the city is setting versus making it real easy for the developer? And it's, those are the two pieces, and if you make it too easy, the image of the city might change or erode, but that's the number one issue for the business community. So at the end of the day, it's a difficult tightrope to walk, but I think it's important to have that relationship with the development community and continue to get feedback so you can make wise decisions as you move forward. All in all, the city is doing great, a lot to be proud of here, a lot of kudos for people who've gotten the city to this point. As I said before, it didn't happen by accident, but there's certainly opportunities to take a look at the survey data as you go forward. And if you have particular groups in the city or certain areas of the city that maybe have specific issues, you can pull out the survey data, again, over the next year or so, and see where you maybe need to reallocate resources. Or if someone comes up and complains about an issue, you can come back to the data to basically make a better interpretive response to what the people's concern might be. But all in all, hopefully this will provide a good baseline for you as you move forward with your strategic planning process. And I'd certainly be happy to take any additional questions if anyone has any.
Councilman Curry?
Well, Chris, I just want to thank you for a great presentation, and it's comforting to know that when you actually get out and talk to the citizens, that they are appreciating the kinds of things that we're doing and getting these kinds of scores. You know, if you only heard some of the things that people say when they come week after week where you stand and talk about the city, you wouldn't necessarily recognize it from these numbers. But it's very gratifying to see that. And Homer, I think it's very, I think the staff ought to feel very commended and very proud of the accomplishments that's reflected in these numbers. I know Councilmember Daigle and Councilmember Hen and I on the Finance Committee have been working with this process now for a while, and I know I'm very, very gratified and pleased with the results and with what they say about our city and the fact that it provides us a roadmap to address those issues that still need to be addressed in plan check and in the building department, in traffic, in police visibility. And it tells us that the things we've done about putting cameras and additional officers tells us that the things we've done about putting cameras and additional officers at Big Corona and on the peninsula, the traffic synchronization programs that we've initiated, the additional money out of the new Measure M for both water quality and traffic mitigation, are on the right direction for addressing the issues that are really on the minds of the community. And so I feel good about that. And I think it gives us a template as we go into the priorities for the budget next year, about how we can really focus on things that have impacted this community in a positive way. Thank you very much.
You're for Tim Daigle?
Yes. This particular survey was an important initiative of the city council, and really a sign of respect for our residents. And we wanted to know, as a city, you know, how well are we doing serving our residents? And now we have some information that we can make decisions from. And I wanted to thank the citizens who took the time to complete that survey. And recently, I was at a function. They had a lot of city administrators and elected officials. And David Jansen, who is a highly respected executive with LA County, said, you know, elected officials help keep the nation strong, but it's public administrators that keep the nation going. And when you talk about running a city, you know, a lot of credit goes to our staff and our administration. It's an enormous task. You know, you look at the number of crimes we investigate, you know, the garbage that we pick up. It's a pretty big operation. And certainly, there are some areas that we need to improve in the plan check. And we have been working, you know, together with our staff in partnership to try to improve some of those processes. So, and knowing from our residents, you know, when we talk about development here, it's not housing tracks, it's home remodels and tenant improvements. And that can really cause a lot of disruption in people's lives. So in terms of where we're going and the kinds of improvements, I think that's something we're working together on to improve. So, thank you, and great job on the survey.
Councilman Hen?
Yeah, Chris, I thought that was a great presentation. There's a heck of a lot of data there, and you summarized it very well. It's obvious you've done this a few times. I think it's ironic, because I suppose if a person were able to fast-forward all these city council meetings that we have, and, you know, this forum is really a forum, in large part, to address grievances and what's not right with the city. And it might be possible for somebody just dropped in from Mars to think that this city is in real trouble with all the complaints we hear and the issues that need to be addressed. The truth of the matter is, we have a great city. That doesn't relieve us of the responsibility to keep it great and maybe make it even greater. And this is what we're talking about. We've had tremendous leadership and participation from the city staff, not just the current city staff, but all the generations that preceded it. I think we've had great leadership from this dais, not so much speaking about the people that are sitting here right now today, but the generations that preceded us. This is no accident, that this is a very great city. And it's up to those that are on the dais today to help make sure that we keep that momentum going, that we make it even better. And in that respect, we've got to be sure that we understand these results. The purpose of this survey is not to assess blame. It's not to point out wrongfulness. It's to point out areas where we can do better. That's what we want to do. We want to do better. And it really almost makes no difference how good we are. We want to do even better. And so this is a way to help us do this with respect to services and service levels of the city. You're going to see more work coming out of the Finance Committee that's addressing how we can go about doing what we do better in terms of the amount of input that we put into it, as well as the output that we get, which is what this is. We get great output. We want to make sure we get great input. And if we can put all that together, we'll have a city that will not be equaled by any other in the United States. Thanks, Chris.
Any other comments, questions? Homer, is there any action required on our part on this, or?
There's not any action required. I think the Finance Committee is going to be working with this. And it is just an evolution, because this is step one, as far as the continual improvement process. So we're off to a good start. I'm really proud of the organization and the marks that we got. But I think what it does is really focus us better, because you never really know, based upon the number of calls you get or complaints, you know, how many people that they represent. And that's really the value of this customer survey, is I think it puts things in perspective. And I certainly don't see staff, I certainly don't see council wanting us to do any less of anything that we're doing. But it gives us the opportunity to rethink some of the things we're doing and how we can do them better.
And Homer, I presume you'll be working with the individual departments then, and looking at this data and trying to help with that?
They have copies of all of this data, although I think Chris has it in a little different form. And I'd sure like to get a copy of, you know, your presentation, because I think that would help. But I've asked all the department heads to review the data, and then we're going to sit down and make sure that we both agree as to what it means, and come up with ways how we can improve our scores where we need to.
Actually, if your file isn't a giant mega-file, I'd like to have an electronic copy.
It's saved on this laptop right here, so if you have a flash drive, you can help yourself.
Okay. Thank you, Chris. Good presentation.
Thank you.
Does anyone from the public want to comment on this? Please step forward.
Hi, Mr. Mayor, council members. My name's Dolores Otting. I live in Newport Beach. I attended both of the Finance Committee meetings on this survey. And the document that I got from the Finance Committee meeting is a little bit different in that I don't know which one you got, but I don't know if you have the tabular information. But the tabular information is very good, because it gives you the percentages of the very satisfied, dissatisfied, neutral, and all of that. And what's very interesting is on page 84, question number 12, about the residential trash survey, when you take out the don't knows, they got a 92.2% in, you know, in the city that are very satisfied and satisfied. And they, if you go to the first question on page 70, which is quality of fire, quality of fire, police, and paramedic services, together, combined, they got a 92.2%. So they're up there with the same, with the trash. And it also has a lot more information in here, so if you don't have that one, that would be really good. It's nice to look at a map, but it's also nice to have individual numbers. And what else? It was a very nice survey. I didn't think it would say anything but what it does say. I mean, I've lived here 20 years now, and, you know, we have one of the best cities. We're known throughout the world. And I didn't expect that that would change. And Nancy, you've grown up here, so you know too. So it was no surprise to me. But what I also want to say is, from that, at the last Finance Committee meeting, and why I'm bringing this up is because of the planning department and plan check, okay? When you do the benchmarking, what Homer brought up, and I thought was a very good idea, is that you start with those two areas of the city, because they are the areas that are of most concern and have most dissatisfaction. And I think that that was a good move on Homer's part. And it wasn't fully accepted by the Finance Committee to do that. Or maybe I misunderstood that, but I think that's something that you should want to do. And then, secondly, because I really think that Councilmember Webb really does know what he's talking about with these benchmarking things, is if you only did those things that were 90% or less, you could probably save the city a lot of money. And the reason why I say that is because I guess some of us forget, and I do too sometimes, is that the city is not a business. We don't pay taxes. We don't get write-offs. And so when you hire a consultant to do this, and hire a consultant to do that, and hire Phil Batchel to come down, because this is the part that was the sad part, and I'm trying to be very positive, is that Phil flew down on two times, and he just dialed a phone, basically. And the Finance Committee handled the rest of it. So we don't get to write that off at the end of the year as a cost of doing business. All we get to do is not be able to put up an emergency warning system. And that wasn't a question that was asked in the survey. And I'm sure if people asked about group homes, you would have gotten a different answer on that question. And those people that have become, you know, have come up before you during the past year, it takes a lot of guts and credit to do what they did. And so I sometimes don't understand why people need to be kind of ridiculed for coming up. But anyway, you could save a lot of money by doing only those areas, because if Councilmember Webb is correct, if they take two minutes, then it's a quarter of a million dollars. If they take five minutes, it's $700,000. If they take 15 minutes and have a cup of coffee every day, we're looking at a lot of money. And on this survey also, it talks about traffic. And Councilmember Gardner brought this up at the Saturday meeting. And Councilwoman Daigle brought this up for the local coastal, for the meeting that you have to do the general plan implementation. And people in the city are very dissatisfied with the traffic. And what you're saying in this report, and what you're going to be saying, is that we're going to be getting a traffic signalization system with cameras and stuff. But the bottom line is, traffic really isn't going to move that much better. And both Councilwoman Gardner and Daigle kind of wanted an education process to explain to people what's really going to be happening. So I think that's something that you might want to do based on this survey. I think you need to educate the people on what they're really going to get. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, since there's no action required in that item, we'll go back in order on the items pulled from the consent calendar. First item is item number three, a resolution to approve Section 20516, employee sharing cost of additional benefits applicable to Section 21354.4, 2.5% at 55 formula for local miscellaneous members. Mr. Nichols, I think you're the one that pulled that, if I'm not mistaken. Remember to watch the lights there, Dick.
Which ones? Started to jump in, I guess. It was a little difficult to tell. It appears that we're bringing one class of employees up to the 2.5% at 55. The, so basically, the public service employees, rather than the safety, are coming up to that. My question is, when you're doing that, with you, although they're paying for some of this benefit for, up till December of 2007, which has already passed, what does that imply? That means the person who just recently got put into this new category and retires immediately, he gets quite a bit of benefits. And those that have been here 20 years will be paying for those. Now, we acquired a pretty healthy deficit on our last retirees, and we transferred them from a defined benefit system to a defined contribution system, which makes sure they stay in and that we pay. And the amount that we were paying, I believe, is $49 million. We're in arrears. So I'm questioning, where are we on this? If we up this grade, what kind of cost are we incurring for this, and what are they into the future? Because we're now talking about all our present employees. We're saying everybody that's retired is in the other group. So I'm just trying to, can we get a cost on this, on how much that is? And I question, too, is this both retirement and health care that we're talking about, or is it just retirement? So I'd like to get that question answered. I think I've talked about whether he retires right away or in the future. So I think I've got most of them. I do note that this new retiree that he pays out of his salary, some of the people are expected to pay somewhat in the future. That future, the 11% salary adjustment that we had, that they're going to pay it out of, that expires in a year or so, I think. That will not continue each year in the future. So, I mean, will we be picking up that cost? That's been our expectation in the past. So I'd like those questions answered, maybe.
Okay. Homer, or Dave?
And maybe Dave can help me. First of all, his question, is it retirement or is it health too? It is just retirement. And this was an increased benefit that the city council adopted, I think, in either late October or November. And it already has taken effect. It's coming back on the consent calendar, not as a new cost, but because PERS required some additional wording in order to make sure that this was affected. And the employees are paying the total cost of the increased benefit. There is no additional cost to the city to go from the 2% at 55 to the 2.5 at 55. That whole cost is being picked up by the city. And I think in the agreement--
The employees.
The employees approved that. There isn't even a reopener on that for another 10 years. And Dave, I'm sure that you could add some more information on that.
Just two more comments, Mr. Mayor and Council, that Mr. Nichols raised. The way this is set up with PERS, remember what, PERS sends us a rate calculation each year, and it includes PERS interest earnings based on its portfolio. And it also makes an actuarial estimate of the city's obligations to meet its own obligation, so its retirement pool. And to go to a 2.5 at 55 program, it costs us 3.42% of salary. So the employees agreed to forego a raise and to pay for that, thanks to your council agreeing to let the employees do that. There's no additional cost that will be lumped on in the future. Employee raises typically don't go away. It becomes part of the salary base, just as inflation progresses over time. Mr. Nichols is correct that an employee retiring tomorrow under this program would receive a significant benefit, because that employee didn't pay in as other employees might. However, and indeed, the employees starting today will pay more. In effect, they're paying, the employees starting today are paying for that older employee's retirement. But the unions themselves voted on this and agreed that they're amenable to doing that. They agreed to do that, as a part of a vote of the three bargaining units that voted this past fall. I think that addressed his other questions. He did mention, will this affect current people who are retired? No, it doesn't. It just affects people retiring from the system at the point of time at which this is effective. Robin?
I was wondering, you might want to also point out that the 3.42% includes paying for that past amount. So there's no--
It does.
That's included in the calculation.
Yeah, that's the total, 3.42% is the total cost of moving to the system. Finally, there are a couple of typos in the resolution. And if the council is about to, considering adoption, I'd offer those corrections right now. In the title, the comma after "California" should go away. And then in the whereas, sorry, the third whereas, there's a year in there that says December 31, 2027. We should take out the second zero. Levon, if you have those for me. Okay. With that, Mr. Mayor, unless you have other questions.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions for Dave? If not, is there a motion?
I move the recommended action.
Is amended?
Has amended.
Okay. Please vote.
With Councilmember Rosansky voting no, and Mayor Pro Tim Daigle abstaining, the motion carries.
Okay, thank you. The next item pulled is item number four. This is establishment of a city council ad hoc committee to oversee the appraisal process for the Banning Ranch property and the assessment of funding availability for its purchases of open space. Mr. Baker?
Dennis Baker, Corona Del Mar. I'm here as a representative, I'm an officer of SPA, and I'm here representing the SPA Steering Committee. And what they wanted to do is request to the council that there be a representative, a citizen representative, specifically from SPA. And I think you can get a lot of bang for the person that I'm going to recommend at the council, that the committee recommends, and that's Jean Watt. We request that she be added to the ad hoc committee. And as most of you know, Jean has spent many years being involved in this banning project. I did check with her and make sure that I wasn't asking that without her knowing about it. So she's agreeable to that, if the council's agreeable to that. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Dennis. I would just say, and I'll invite the Councilwoman Gardner and Councilmember Rosansky to comment, that we did discuss on how to form the committee. And I believe that we decided to make a recommendation to the council that we have the ad hoc committee, as suggested, and at the appropriate times, that we would be bringing in representatives from the environmental community, as well as property owner, is appropriate to participate as we move forward in this. Any comments you want to add to that? No, I would agree with that, sorry. Okay. Anyone else want to comment on this item?
Hi, Dolores Otting, City in Newport Beach, an advocate for transparency in government. And of course, this just flies in the face of that. This will be an ad hoc committee meeting, which will mean that it will be three council members, which will mean it'll be behind closed doors, which will mean it won't be posted anywhere, which would mean that I would feel much better if Jean Watt was on the committee. I've known Jean for a very, very, very long time. I don't think there's a person in the city that I don't respect as much as her. So I don't agree with any ad hoc committee meetings. You know, we just had an election, and somebody had the guts and the ability to spend $700,000 to help the residents, because we had a city council that was totally opposed to even, I mean, like, looking at that idea. I just don't get it. I don't, I went to the Marina Park meeting for the first time in a long time, and there weren't minutes on the agenda. I mean, like, there wasn't the name of the committee on the website. There wasn't minutes, and there wasn't any agendas. And they all got put up since I started complaining. I, no. I, thank you. I know I'm just wasting my breath up here. And it'll go the way you're going to say it's going to go. But I don't think it's in the best interest of the community. I don't think it's in the best interest of you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Kevin Nelson. I'd like to--
I'd like to make a couple of points on the Banning Ranch issue. First of all, I would just like to have the, all the members keep in mind the intense value of that kind of recreational opportunity that you have before you're here to at least start the process on. You saw the survey recommendations on how important recreation is to your residents. And further, the second point is if we, you know, if we could, as a community, begin to imagine, let's say, another, you know, facility equal to, at least equal to, the Back Bay in its, in its use and its overall very long-term value, the great value of the Back Bay to this community, for instance, all those people who use that, that little trail along that area. Well, if you were to take, Banning Ranch by itself might not, you know, measure up to the Back Bay. But if you took, if you connected the Talbert Marsh and the Fairview Park and the, and a rough equivalent of, if you turned Banning Ranch, if we were in the future able to turn Banning Ranch into that quality of experience for the people of Costa Mesa and Newport who are out there, and there's a regular usage of that area. I, you know, I hope that you're aware of what that, what that property, Fairview and Talbert Marsh looks like. It's a great space. The way it's been, you know, refurbished and replanted, not expensive, but a really terrific experience. If we were to take that experience and extend it all the way through, turn Banning Ranch into an extension, into the, something, you know, the equivalent of the Orange Coast River Park, for instance, a study group that's working for that, we would have, you know, of course, I'm not going to say a national class, but within the state, within any urban area in the state, we would just have something that would be so unique 20 years hence from now. Whereas, you know, we've, we've got, you've got great developments everywhere. But we, you know, but this would serve all of Southern California, a place like this, a stretch of land for people to just, to just be. And 20 years, 30 years from now, when the, when the Southern California grows another five, six, eight million people, whatever, 10 million, whatever it's going to do, that land will be, will be very, very valuable just as a recreational resource. So, you know, if we could envision that as a community, I think we'd have a great, it would be a great thing. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Terry Welsh, and I am chairperson of the Banning Ranch Park and Preserve Task Force. And I've spoke before you before. And I've probably, since we formed in 1999, have probably chaired about 85 meetings of our task force. And I expect to chair about 180 more or so. We are, our position is that the entire area should be preserved as open space. And there should be no homes, no coastal in, and no businesses built on the area. I don't have to tell you that just in the last 10 years or so, since our group has been around, Marblehead has been developed, Dana Point Headlands have been developed, Crystal Cove has been developed, Bolsochica Mesa is now being developed. And Banning Ranch, it really remains the last large piece of privately held coastal space, coastal open space in Orange County. And I'm under no illusions, it's going to be an enormous task to purchase this entire property. It's going to cost a ton of money. It's going to take a lot of work and a lot of time. But the will is out there. And I also know, I know that you all know better than anybody, when the general plan was passed in 2006 with that priority on open space, that's not just, you know, a token statement, but it really reflects the will of Newport Beach. And I think it's important, I've said this before, but Newport Beach will have another opportunity to show the rest of California, when it decides an area should be open space priority, it means it. And I support the creation of this ad hoc committee. I think that Newport Beach should not be expected to purchase this property on its own. I think that would exhaust the coffers of the city. But I think that Newport Beach is the perfect vehicle to take the first step, to organize the many, many different parties that are going to have to come together. I'm actually going to meet on the 27th with some representatives from the owners. They're going to give me a tour of the property. And I intend to ask them to commit to selling the entire property. You know, I may or may not get that commitment in return, but I absolutely will ask them that. And just really encourage you all to just really, really give it that extra effort. And we can do this. We can preserve the entire Banning Ranch. Thanks.
Thank you.
Mr. Wells? That does include a 30-acre lighted sports park, doesn't it?
It includes some great lit sports fields, yeah. It's, it's-
At least 30 acres, right?
Well, we haven't actually figured out the exact acreage, but it will be very, very good.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, bring it back to the council for discussion or motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to accept the staff's recommendation for forming the city council ad hoc committee to oversee the appraisal process and to proceed with the city council's designation of the Banning Ranch priority for 2008 by appointing you, myself, and Councilwoman Gardner to the committee.
Second.
Councilwoman Dagel, you have to-
Yeah, I would just say, this is an excellent approach. We're acting in the furtherance of our general plan and really looking forward to the work of the committee.
And that it will all, whatever we do in, on the ad hoc task force committee, will come back to the council and to the public for comment. There are no deals that are done behind doors.
Well, Sid.
I think that we really need to consider, this is the appraisal process. This isn't acquiring the property. So that we're just trying to go out and find a dollar value that would give us some idea of what we might need to come up with if it's to be purchased.
Well, that, and then how we might go about it, what funding sources might be available and things of that nature. Okay, please vote.
Motion carries.
Okay, the next item is item number nine. Do you want that to continue to a date certain? Oh, it's been removed? Oh, okay, it's been removed completely. And item 10's been removed completely. Items 12, I believe Mr. Nichols requested some clarification of that item?
And Mr. Mayor, staff can talk to Mr. Nichols outside of the council meeting if he, that is acceptable to him in terms of, I think he wanted a status report on the Oasis project. And we've hired an architect, and we'll be bringing a staff recommendation for a project manager to you at the next council meeting.
I move the recommended action.
Okay, does anyone else want to comment on item 12? Okay, seeing no one, please vote.
Motion carries.
Okay, item 13 was disposed of. So we're on to public hearings. Our first public hearing is the Liberty Baptist Church School Expansion, General Plan Amendment Number 2006-004, Planned Community Development Plan Amendment Number 2006-003, and Amendment to Use Permit Number 1726. Mr. Lebo?
Mayor, members of city council, our associate planner, Jaime Maria, is playing doctor, or Mr. Mom this week. So I'm standing in for him and presenting this report. As you've indicated, Mayor, this concerns the Liberty Baptist Church on the north side of Bison Avenue at Jamboree Road. The proposal deals with the replacement of four modular classroom facilities with about 31,000 square feet of new building that includes 14 classrooms, gymnasiums, support facilities, science lab, that kind of thing. To accomplish that, the planning commission has recommended that you adopt a general plan amendment. That entails just simply changing the anomaly table. If you remember, the general plan, there are certain sites that have a square footage, dwelling unit count attached to them. This one had a specific number of square foot maximum development limit attached to it. That anomaly table needs to be increased by 26,114 square feet for this site. As we've indicated in the staff report, this is essentially correcting an oversight that's been carried forward since the 1988 general plan in that the original development plan for this site was approved back in '74 for about 85,000 square feet. Over the period of time, the two general plans have been amended. Both times, the approval for the general, the master plan for this facility was overlooked and not included, therefore, in the numbers in the general plan. First general plan amendment would accomplish that. Secondly, Community Development Text Plan Amendment would add this additional square footage to what amounts to the zoning for this particular site. All in all, again, the four modular units would be replaced by the 31,000 square foot building. The use permit would be approved and would allow an increase from 260 to as many as 325 students on the property, and also would reduce the required parking from 506 spaces to about 444 spaces. Again, the recommendation from the planning commission was to approve as presented to you tonight. This did take some time and had to go to the Airport Land Use Commission. I think Councilman Webb can probably give you probably more detailed information you needed than I can provide. There was some question about the Airport Land Use Commission, whether this was in conformity with the Airport Environment and Land Use Plan. And Councilman Webb stepped in and kind of helped the commission along to understand that, considering the lay of the land out there, this wasn't going to be a problem for flights approaching or departing John Wayne Airport. So with that, the recommendation is to open the public hearing and then adopt the resolution approving the general plan amendment and introduce the ordinance approving the Planned Community Development Plan. Any questions?
Okay, any questions, Mr. Lebo? Councilman Gardner?
Yes. One thing that did puzzle me is on the resolution on page three, which is handwritten eight, in the second full paragraph, whereas it talks about a condition of approval has been recommended, requiring the preparation of a detailed noise study. Now, when something is recommended, that means if you want to. Whereas, it does seem, though, that the project has been conditioned. So is, are we recommending it or are we requiring it?
Because, Mayor, in response to Councilwoman Gardner's question, because the resolution is adopting the conditions that go with the use permit, the condition that says you will do-
Okay, so I'm correct, it is required?
It is required, yes, ma'am.
It says, okay. I was very pleased to see that we are being consistent in terms of our landscaping with drought-tolerant plants and smart irrigation. I would still like to see us start to encourage just the simple thing when the paved road section, that we make the paving as light as possible. I know there's this big thing about how nice a freshly blacktoped parking lot looks, but it just makes it hotter, so let's go with a light pavement.
Mayor, if I may, again, this went to the planning commission back in September, so we have noted since then, your comments, in fact, are working on including pervious pavement in future projects.
Then the only other comment I have, I was, it was hard to follow the planning commission process because their conditions don't number up with our conditions. And so I was a little confused at times as to what was deleted and what was included, that was carried over.
I apologize for that. You know, coming back to this tonight, Mayor, I looked at that and without having the original conditions that were submitted to the planning commission, you couldn't follow that. As noted here, the two commissioners that voted against the resolutions for approval didn't have a problem with the project. They, there was a lot of debate, as you can see, about the conditions that were applied. And those related mainly to operational conditions. For example, the restrictions on use of the gymnasium for outside events. Some planning commissioners thought restrictions limiting the use to non-paying community groups where there was no, you know, consideration paid or no donation given was important. Others thought it wasn't important. The sound analysis was also considered. A couple of planning commissioners thought that was onerous to have a subsequent analysis done before, after the building was completed but before it was occupied. Those were the two major areas of disagreement. But in the end, overall, all the planning commissioners did support the project.
Okay, any other questions? Mayor Pro Tim Dagel?
I would just note, being located in District Four as well as a number of other churches, really appreciate Councilman Webb's representation on the Airport Land Use Commission. And had it not been for his advocacy, the steeple and the cross would have been lower. And as has been expressed to me, he was able to point out that the cross and the steeple were in effect lower, at a lower grade in elevation than the surrounding streetlights. So appreciate that.
Okay. Thank you, David.
It would have been very difficult for an airplane to find any portion of this building without hitting something else on the way in.
Can I open the public hearing and invite anyone that wants to speak in this item to step forward?
Good evening, I'm Jim Bickle from Bickle Underwood Architects. I just wanted to say thank you for having us here tonight. And we've reviewed all the conditions that the commission put on us. We, as well as the church, are prepared to live by those. And just wanted to offer, let you know I was here if you had any questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, I'll close the hearing, bring it back for motion.
Make a motion.
Make a motion as recommended. And did you, Councilwoman Gardner, did you have something to integrate in there? Okay, thank you.
Second. Okay, please vote.
Motion carries.
Okay, next on our agenda is public comments. Madam Clerk?
Public comments are invited on non-agenda items generally considered to be within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman, here tonight to talk before Mr. Blue Dows, oh, my name is Trev Heining, Newport Beach, sorry. Here to talk tonight before Mr. Blue Dows talk about the 2008 priorities and primarily about the airport and how I feel that the airport should be higher on the list of priorities than it is. It should be within the top three. After listening to Chris's report tonight on all the wonderful things about Newport Beach and all the things that we know about this great city, I don't think there's anything that can impact all the things he talked about as much as what's going to happen with the airport. And I want to make sure that all of us are not sitting back waiting until 2014 to act on this. I think the time to act on the airport is now, in a very offensive way, not a defensive way, to set out rules and guidelines on the environmental impact it's going to have on our community, on the traffic it's going to have, and working to involve not just our community, but all the communities in the flight plan, to get people involved and activated to realize that this airport cannot increase in size, it has to decrease in size. So that our bay that we talked about today or tonight, Back Bay, something I ride around my bike every single day, 10 miles, is not affected. I'm sure that there'll be environmental impacts with the increase on the airport that will happen. It's already come out that they've said that they've increased the seats, and they've used jargon to say, well, no, it's not really passengers, it's seats, or it's seats, and it's passengers. And they're already pushing the boundaries of what we've put in place to keep the airport where it is. And I know myself and a group of the citizens are not going to wait. We are going to actively pursue every avenue that we can. Now that the balloon ride up in Irvine is not going to be taking up the runways, it seems to me that we should also actively look at the fact that that could still be an airport. It's something that we all know is right, it's needed. It's something that we're going to be pushed and pushed and pushed on. And I'm just here tonight to express my opinion that we should not wait until they offer us 20 million passengers and we say, okay, 15. We have to say, no more, no more commercial air traffic at John Wayne Airport. There's a better solution, there are other solutions, and we should all be looking at those solutions together. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
Just, you might want to clarify. I think it was Mr. Rosansky who was so eloquent that, of the way we did our priorities, that it was just understood that the airport was always there and always number one. But there are priorities we focus for on specifically for a year where that one is ongoing and it always requires a lot of attention.
And I also think it's pretty clear from the staff report. It says, again, these carryover priorities, when added, are not listed in any particular order. And so I think it's, I don't know anybody who sits up here that doesn't think that the airport certainly is in the top three, probably the top one or two, you know, next to traffic, which was also a big issue, as you saw earlier in the presentation. So I'm confident that we will do all that we can to ensure the safety and security and the health and welfare of all of our residents when it comes to the airport issue.
Councilman Webb?
Our aviation committee has discussed, and many of the items that the gentleman has mentioned- has mentioned, and the policy we recently adopted, has encouraged, and we are actively working on involving more of the corridor cities in our decision-making process. We've had a presentation from the Airport Director concerning the numbers, and the press and the way they're printed, it's a little bit confusing when you compare that with what is actually being enforced by the airport, so that we are within the, they feel that they will always be within the limits that are put forth in our settlement agreement. I agree 100 percent. We can't wait until 2015 to, to, well, continue the settlement agreement. We have to continue to continually work towards making that agreement as permanent as we can get it, and so that the active, the activities that our city is doing right now, we still are actively pursuing all of the various different airport issues to the extent that we can at the present time.
Councilman Curry?
And I would just add that we have, have been, in fact, very proactive. Last year, we negotiated the, or 19, or 2006, we negotiated the spheres Agreement that blocked runway expansion at the airport. Supervisor Morlock has been tremendously helpful with the city in blocking the Regional Airport Commission from becoming an agency with eminent domain. They have now completely reoriented themselves and are probably going to reform as an entity more focused at moving people by ground to the other regional airports so they can fly from LAX and from Ontario, and that kind of thing. And we continue to work with our congressional representatives in Washington to, to make sure that we're well-positioned when the time is appropriate for these negotiations to commence, so that we are in the strongest possible position to do them. And as Councilmember Webb has noted, and Mr. Rosansky, we're working very closely with the Airport Working Group, with Airfare, and with the corridor cities, so that we have the strongest possible political coalition. And you can be assured that it is a top priority, I think, as Mr. Rosansky said, of everybody here on the council.
Okay, any other comments?
Is this public comments?
Sure, we'll give you a shot.
Okay. I got a little bit confused here. I thought it was council comments on committee activity. Okay. Hi, my name is Laura Zodding, I live in Newport Beach. Probably why some of the people are confused as to the airport is because maybe you should have an agenda item that talks about the airport, maybe on a monthly basis, if not every two weeks. Because, again, you have one of those Fairs Committees that talks about the airport, and that's another one of those ad hoc committees, without agendas, that the public doesn't know what's going on, so, you know, they think nothing is going on. And I was at that Saturday goal priority meeting, and yes, I have to applaud former mayor, you know, like Rosansky, because he was the one that said we need to bring up the airport. And we had Mr. Bachelor in town that flew down from Northern California to be the mediator for that day, and as much as I think Mr. Bachelor is worth his weight in gold, he doesn't live here, and he doesn't understand that that was the most, that that is the most important issue in our city. And so he's trying to tell Councilmember Rosansky, no, it's okay, it's just on a list, and they'll know you're working on it. And so Steve really did push that, and then I got up and pushed it, and Airfare got up and pushed, also pushed it, that was, you know, Melinda Seeley was there. So anyway, yeah, we need to do a better job of informing the public that you are doing something about the airport, because the Aviation Committee meeting that meets on Monday at 8:00 had no agenda posted on the calendar, but I want to thank you because it was on the calendar. And that's another thing. We have a meeting calendar that's actually a tab on the website, and I know our website could get better, but this is really well-done, and it's run by the city clerk, Levon. She does a great job, but she can only input the information that you give her, so she doesn't put meetings unless you do that. And why I'm here also tonight is because up at Newport Coast, there's a fabulous community center, and it's absolutely beautiful, and everyone should go see it. My problem with it is the fact that in order for you to get there from where I live, you go up San Joaquin Hills Road, and you have to make a U-turn at the light, and that street is Newport Coast Drive, and here are the cars coming up this way, and there's a hill and there's a crest, and so they also get to make a right as the other car gets to make a left. And I happen to live at the infamous street light of San Miguel in San Joaquin Hills. By the time we had the sixth accident where I think people almost died, was finally when something did happen, and I'd come up a few times over a year on that issue. So I just want to be put on record that somebody needs to really look at that light, because even though it's the most perfectly planned community, you, you know that we have had problems with some streets and have had to do some other engineering up there. And then, so that's something that I think needs to be looked at, and I, when I went up there, a friend of mine said, be very careful, they have a lot of accidents at that intersection. And then, secondly, the emergency plan for the community, the emergency warning system, that was something that was brought up a while ago, hasn't been brought up anymore. We've had a few earthquakes down in Mexico. So anyway, we spend a lot of money on a lot of things, my time is up, I want to thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ron Darling, Newport Beach. I'm also a member of the Airport Working Group, I'm on the board, and Councilman Curry mentioned that John Murlock has been a friend to the city on the airport issues. In fact, he is instrumental in saving the golf course from being paved over as a parking lot. And I'd like to mention that the Airport Working Group is having its annual meeting at the Bow Boy Yacht Club, which is open to the public, and John Murlock is the featured speaker. So any, any member of the, of the council or the public who wants to attend and hear John speak about the airport issues, I encourage them to come. It's February 26 at the Bow Boy Yacht Club. Open to public, nobody are dur served.
Next year, can you possibly try to schedule it on a meeting that is not a City Council meeting night?
Oh, is it the same night?
Yes.
Okay, so we won't see any of you there, but all the other members of the public are going to attend, we'd love to see them.
We would like to come and participate.
I was unaware of that. Thanks.
Any other public comments? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to oral reports from City Council on committee activities, and it looks like we have time this evening, so, Councilwoman Gardner?
The Coastal Bay Water Quality Committee is working on a water quality master plan. We're using this, the CIP model, and I think we'll have something for our, hopefully for our next, next meeting or the one after that, which would list all of our various projects, both that we have scheduled now and that we would like to do. I think there'll be something very exciting to see, and I think, was it, was it you, Ed, that was asking for to have it all on one page, so you could see what we're doing? Well, you will now have it.
Good. Councilman Curry?
I would note that the Finance Committee held its first working meeting with its benchmarking and performance measurement consultants. I thought we had a very good meeting. They are in the process of working with Homer to meet with the department heads to scope out sort of the approach on this initiative. We want, because the Finance Committee is a brown act committee, it's, is noticed to the public, and I've asked staff to, to notice all of the members of the council, certainly you're welcome to come to those meetings if you would like to, as this process evolves, to hear what's going on, so that everybody is fully informed of it. Thank you.
Okay. Councilman Webb said he had nothing to report. Councilman Hen? Councilman Rosansky?
Nothing.
Mayor Protemdego has nothing. I'll just give a quick report on the Marina Park Committee. We are working on refining the plan based on the comments that were received at the council's approval of the concept plan, as well as continued public participation at the meetings, and we have a subcommittee that is meeting prior to our next month's meeting to work with the different users of the park to come up with some scope of how the operations would actually function in the, in the park when it's completed. So it's, it's a group that continues to move forward. Okay, with that, we'll move on to our next item, which is the Planning Commission Agenda and Oral Status Report, and the city clerk tells me that we can combine supplemental item 17 with 15. Mr. Leepo?
Mayor, members of City Council, I think you'll notice maybe this time, if in your agenda package, we kind of expanded our text on what happened to Planning Commission meetings, so there were two meetings since your last council meeting, one on January 31st, one on February 7th. January 31st, Hoag Hospital Master Plan was first introduced, there was a lot of discussion on that, details in your report. Also, the Arches Grill Use Permit Amendment to allow the new arches on 29th Street to serve lunch, that was approved. On the 7th, we came back again with the Hoag Master Plan, this time we focused on the noise issues surrounding the loading dock, with the help of the mayor and Councilmember Rosansky. I think we've gotten the two sides, Phil Ababa and Hoag Hospital, together, we are working on the noise problem, and we're also working with Laura Daniel that we've hired to represent the city's interests and work on the cogeneration plume issue. So, any questions?
Any questions, Mr. Leepo? Okay, thank you, David. Next item is continued business. The city manager's proposed assignment of schedules and resources for the city council's established 2008 priorities.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There's already been some discussion tonight about the city council priorities, but for those of people who are not in attendance and are watching, I just wanted to let them know that on Saturday, January 12, the City Council met for the second year in a row, this time in January, as opposed to last year in March, in order to establish your work priorities for this calendar year. The process was that coming to the meeting, each council member would select their top three priorities, and we would see how those rankings went, those priorities then were discussed, and City Council came up with seven new priorities based upon the ones that were suggested by council people. Also, the previous year's priorities were discussed and reviewed, and five priorities from the 2007 list were added to this year's list to combine to make 12 council priorities for this calendar year. So the reason I'm here tonight is because at this meeting, there needs to be the assignment of staff resources and also the scheduling for how these 12 priorities will unfold, what will be the key action steps in order to make sure that these priorities are accomplished. So this is my best attempt at juggling the staff resources in order to accomplish either all of these priorities or as much of the priorities as can reasonably be accomplished with our staff that we have, and also to do it on a schedule that works for you in terms of thinking that these priorities are being pushed along fast enough. But there is no question that if we take any of these 12 priorities in isolation without the other priorities, that we could probably move faster on one or on several. So this, you need to keep in mind, is a combination juggling the resources, because there will be a number of staff members, a number of departments, that will be working on numerous of these priorities. So my attempt was to try and make sure that they all moved along as smartly as possible. And as smartly, I mean as rapidly, but as smartly too. So let me talk about the 12 council priorities, and this is in no particular order, as it says in the staff report. But the first one I'm going to talk about is move forward with the planning, processing, and construction of a new city hall. I identified, along with staff, 16 key steps that we think that can be accomplished, not all in this year, but also to project out when realistically we think a city hall could be open. But first of all, is looking at the next City Council meeting, which would be February the 26th, with the Building Committee coming back to the City Council with a recommendation as far as, as a site decision. Once that site decision is made, then I think things can move pretty rapidly in terms of council determining how it wants to select the architect, moving ahead with geotechnical studies that will be needed, selection of a contract manager, very early in the process, and that could have implications for how the architect is selected, traffic consultants. Step number seven shows the council selecting the architect by June 10, and there's quite a bit of play to give council the option of looking at several processes by which that selection could be made. But we also want to start the EIR process as soon as possible, but under this scenario, a city council would not be open until early in 2012. We hope that that could be done faster, but I think this is realistic at this point in time, knowing what we know and knowing the key decisions that are going to be, needed to be made by council pretty rapidly. And, Mr. Mayor, I think it would be best for me to stop after each one, rather than going through all of these 12 and hearing, you know, council discussion. This is certainly going to be, you know, your priorities, myself and staff want to support your priorities 100 percent, so, you know, these key steps need to be the steps that you think are key in order to be able to attach some scheduling dates to, and these projects need to move ahead, you know, to your satisfaction in terms of how fast they move forward.
I might want to add that the Building Committee had a meeting before the City Council meeting this evening, and met with the staff, and we'll be meeting again next week, and our goal is to go through and refine the schedule a little bit more, and be coming up with a set of recommendations for the meeting of February 26.
And also hopefully expedite the process so that we're not four years out.
Yes.
And also provide for plenty of opportunity for public input and participation in the process.
Okay, if there are no more comments, I will go to the next council priority, which is regularly update the facilities financing plan, which for short, it's FFP, and implement the planning, financing, and construction of the identified projects. Now, I took a narrow view of what this council priority is. To me, it did not mean the particular projects and itemizing the particular projects in terms of what staffing would be needed and what the schedules would be, but this particularly speaks to the master plan, the facilities financing plan, and I took that as, really the council finance committee would meet and review that plan three times before the end of the calendar year, be making recommendations to the city council after their meetings as appropriate, but looking at cost estimates for, that we have for facilities and projects on the plan, looking at scheduling and revenue assumptions, making sure that those are updated and they are as accurate as possible. The council finance committee would also look at the space needs analysis that would be coming back to the city council as far as whether we need a space needs analysis for some of the facilities that are listed on the plan. And basically, the process is that the finance committee would be making recommendations to council on a regular basis, making sure that the financing plan is something that is a part of our regular planning for the facilities that are listed on the plan, and that it really serves as the long-term framework for how projects are going to be scheduled and planned and financed. So this may be a more narrow view than you have in mind. Some of these projects that are on the facilities financing plan are called out separately in terms of park projects and city hall projects, and there are others that aren't on your list of priorities, but I was looking at how we could make this facilities financing plan really meaningful, get it before the council, and make sure that it is massaged and working, I think, the way the city council wanted it to be working.
What, besides Oasis and City Hall, what projects do you see coming up that we're going to need to be having funding for here in the next, say, year to 18 months?
You know, other than starting off some, the, the planning and maybe public outreach of some projects, I, I don't see us being in construction on any other projects, and Steve, correct me if you have any different ideas.
No fire stations?
We don't have any fire stations in the works, and I think the next one that we would like to do is the one close to City Hall, but that has to do with when we would be vacating this property and when it would be the right time in order to move forward on that, on that project. We already have the space needs on that, we also have some planning, and we have the, basically, the site work pretty well-done in terms of the concept.
Is, is that going to be a logical increment for using COPs? I, if I remember correctly, we had a larger chunk of projects on the plan that the Facilities Finance Committee came up with.
Yeah, I, I think we would be looking at wanting to bundle that one with some other, what other project may be close in proximity, because as I recall, that would be about a $7 million project, and that doesn't seem to me to be the kind that would be a standalone project for.
Well, yeah, I think at some point, especially if we're looking 18 months out, or financing Sunset Ridge Park is going to be in the mix there at some point.
Well, and probably Marina Park, because I believe we're going to have that property vacated by 2009, and it's going to be ready to, to start doing some things there as well. I also think- I also think we need to look at the library and fire station in Corona del Mar for what needs to be done there potentially, but that needs to be sequenced a lot with, as part of this plan, along with the fire chief in terms of their resource needs as well.
I think the thought is that the finance committee would be bringing forth recommendations, the city council would decide basically the priorities, when projects would start and moving them through the process and thinking of funding and when we would need to bundle them and how that would take place. So, it would be an ongoing process.
Okay, any other questions on that one?
Well, I neglected to show the few steps that I listed here. Again, an ongoing process. The next priority to talk about is implement new group homes residential ordinances, work at the state and federal levels to allow local governments greater ability to regulate the secondary effects of an over-concentration of group homes. There are 12 key steps, oops, looks like 11 key steps that Dave and I identified for this and the first one has already been accomplished as far as your January 22nd meeting when your new ordinances and regulations were adopted. The next several meetings, you will have items coming back to you as far as issuing a request for proposals for hearing officers. There are a lot of things that need to be lined up. People need to be hired, part-time staff needs to be hired as far as enforcement. Item number six, seek out and retain contract planners to begin the review of the use permits. We anticipate that there will be quite a few of those applications that will be made. A lot of those hearings will take place from March through July of this year. There will be envisioned bi-monthly reports to the city council every two months.
Homer, didn't we agree that that we're, we're going to be bi-monthly reports on all the priorities?
Yes, there will be, yes. So, that is basically an itemized list of what we see happening during this calendar year. Significant staff resources are going to be required and also some significant financial resources. We're looking at initially almost half a million dollars. Some of that money could be reimbursed in terms of the cost of use permits, but it is something that would be a major staff resource use, something that is certainly a high priority with the city council.
Okay, any questions on that one?
We anticipate maybe 3,000 to 4,000 staff hours would be used, including contract staff, over the calendar year.
Do you expect that to continue on at that level?
No.
On an ongoing basis?
No.
It's just the first year.
Yes, I think once we get a handle on it, it will certainly, and certainly the number of permits that need to be reviewed will be less and less as time goes on. The next priority we'll take a look at is prepare and implement a water quality master plan that addresses and prioritizes our water quality needs into the future. And I think one of the common themes as far as the council priorities is looking at, you know, facilities, a financing plan, a water quality master plan is really coming up with structure that also provides detail in term of what actions long-term are going to happen. It's getting your arms around the planning and looking long-term and which ones sequentially makes sense. And I think it's to the city council's credit that you're tackling some very big issues in this systematic way. This does it by a water quality master plan. The steps that have been identified are eight. Basically, most of the early steps are developing the water quality master plan. Step number five says bringing that developed master plan to the city council in a study session either in March or April, so we're not very far away from doing that. Doing some funding in this year's budget in order to do that and finalizing the master plan, bringing it back to the city council for your adoption probably in April or May. And then starting the beginning implementation of those, those projects that you want to take on in order to implement the master plan. We estimate about 320 staff hours that would be required for this priority in this calendar year.
Here, President Dagan.
Uh, yes. Having been one of at least a couple council members to put this as one of the three priorities and certainly the entire council embraces, the water quality, my thoughts that it would include more than just the plan and if the comments could reflect, because we have an important project, the Back Bay Science Center that will be opening and so that we can look back after the year and say, you know, this, you know, this did open and certainly we're going to have to work out some of the programming issues, but that would be my first comment, if we could articulate to the citizens, you know, this project and that it will be opening. And then secondly, on dredging to, that the comments would reflect that as our congressman's office came here, that they are looking at writing some legislation on Lower Bay, which would be certainly landmark legislation for our community. So, if the plan could also reflect those two items, I would appreciate it.
Okay, it sure can. If there are no further comments, next priority is institute an organizational performance improvement effort through data gathering and the identification of service benchmarks to measure organizational effectiveness. I think we already got off to a good start on this one with the presentation that we heard today. Step one being the customer satisfaction survey. The steps that have been identified, just a minute, I think I'm on the wrong page. There we go, are 11 and they have basically been identified through the ICMA as the consultant team that now is in charge of really with staff, the second phase, which is the benchmarking phase and identifying how we're going to do that, identifying what the benchmarks are going to be, all of that going through the council finance committee and coming to the city council so those final decisions can be made. But these steps basically came from the ICMA proposal that was accepted in the contract that we have with the ICMA team. The, the two team members from ICMA are going to spend, I think it's 57 days, calendar days here within the next year. They will make a satisf, a regular reports, I say regular reports to the city council whenever the benchmarking decisions are brought to the city council as far as what will be benchmarked and what the indicators will be. There will be a presentation to the finance committee in June the 30th recommending peer cities that we compare our benchmarks with in the May-June timeframe. All of this time coming, working with staff, developing the benchmarks so that we can compare our benchmarks with those that have been previously developed in other cities. Item number 10 is ICMA team prepares a final report and presentation to the city council by September the 15th. And the, the step number 11 then is looking at the third phase of the process to where we look at doing an audit for some of our processes that might help us become more efficient and effective. Very significant staff involvement. It's hard to say at this time, but ICMA team is going to work with a team of four employees as far as the planning. The kickoff is going to start, I think, on the 28th of this month. There's going to be a kickoff for the supervisors in the organization that the ICMA team is going to lead and we're going to get into it pretty quickly.
Councilman Webb?
As I see it in this process, it looks like the next time the full city council will have any idea what's going on is September 15th for the final report. Was my understanding that we were going to be involved with the recommendations on the peer cities? Also, that I noticed on June 30th, the finance committee will meet and look at the needs for the benchmarking. Would seem like to me it might be appropriate after that time for the finance committee to make a report back to the city council on what direction they're going before the final report is all wrapped up. I had hoped that there would be a little bit more full city council involvement in this rather than it being handled by the finance committee from start to finish.
Councilman Webb, I don't think I did a very good job in, in explaining that. Item number seven, I would see that would eventually come to the city council after going to the finance committee to where the benchmarking decisions were going to be made by full council with the recommendation of the committee.
And I would add, Don, you were out of the room when we did the committee reports, but I, we've extended an invitation to all council members to come because it's an open Brown Act meeting to the finance committee as these items come up on the agenda and I specifically asked that people be noticed about that so that you're looking at, it's not a Brown Act meeting. It's not?
That would be, have to be a noticed special meeting of the council if you're going to have all the council members present.
Not if they're all there, but can they come as individuals or just, you know, just come?
No.
Oh, well, all right.
Okay, never mind. However, however, I would comment that we do have a commitment that every other month, half of these priorities will be reported on and reviewed with council. And I certainly do support Homer's comment that, you know, after we, after the committee's had a chance to look at these benchmarks, that all of that be shared and analyzed with council in full session at a regularly agendized meeting. And there may be other, I didn't, I didn't look at that list, Homer, with the idea of how many, where, where full council reviews need to be inserted, but I would support that, that, you know, that we go back through there and add in the appropriate spots for that. It certainly is our intention to do that.
It certainly is. I think there's about a three-month timeframe in which the ICMA team members are going to be working with staff dealing, looking at the operations. They've already been here, as Councilman Curry said, in order to try and understand the organization, get a handle on the culture, talk to a number of people so that they can meet with the employees and, and start working with them for the various departments and looking at, you know, what data do we have, what services would be relatively easy to benchmark, but not only easy, which ones are going to be, you know, the most productive for us to look at. We don't want to look at something that we know we're doing very well and it's easy to have data on it in order to show that. We really want this process to end up being valuable to us and the time being well-spent because we are looking at significant staff hours. I think if you look at, you know, the combination of all of the staff in all of the departments and the number of meetings there would be with, with numerous staff people, we're looking at over 1,000 hours probably dedicated to this, this priority. So, I, I think everybody's in full agreement that the staff would, I mean, the council will be fully informed and brought along in the process and that you would be making the key decisions before anything goes any further. And I apologize for not stating that very well. The next council priority is conduct an appraisal of the Banning Ranch property and assess funding available for the purchase of the property for open space. So, the key to this one was identifying what we could do in the next 12 months in order to accomplish having an appraisal and not only having an appraisal, but then giving sufficient time to look and see what resources and what funding might be available in order to, to fund the purchase of Banning Ranch. And this would be done even though there is a council ad hoc committee, it would be something that would be very transparent as far as the public participation is concerned. Talking with the interest groups, not only the owners, but any, you know, environmental groups and neighborhoods that might be interested in this process. The city council has made it very clear it wants a fair appraisal. It wants a fair process, looking at approving the contract with the appraiser on April the 22nd. By the way, the first step here, and it was my idea, was to contain an, to obtain an appraisal of Bolsochica land sale and evidently it's, it's my preliminary information, there is no such animal, that there was not really a valid appraisal that went through the whole process, it was a negotiated purchase. So, I thought that that would be a very good model for us to use, but we're going to have to seek further and see if there is some other document that we can use for coming up with, as was discussed at the council priority session, you know, what the boundaries would be for the appraiser. Number six, appraiser meets with interested parties to review the preliminary appraisal findings, coming back to the city council, presenting that document. And then the council ad hoc committee would again be serving as the group that would really do the outreach in terms of where the funding might be from, working with staff in order to try and find out what is a realistic, what is realistic in terms of funding based upon the appraisal price. So, we think that we should be able to accomplish that one before the calendar year.
Just a minute. Councilman Webb?
I guess, in having worked with a number of appraisals over the years, there's a lot of different kinds of appraisals and I perceive this appraisal as being a little different from an appraisal you might make to acquire property for widening a road, future condemnation issue. This is such a large parcel, I'm not sure that you really want to get down into something that you would take to court if you condemn the property because I'm not sure we can afford that appraisal at this time. I think that, I guess it would be my recommendation that we at least look at appraisers who can give us a order of magnitude opinion as to what the price might be because we're looking at a very large insensitive project that has many, many complicated factors, particularly related to the oil field operations out there. So, you might want to have the committee talk to several appraisers before you get RFQs just to find out from them what they consider to be the term or the type of appraisal that would be appropriate for this use because I'm assuming that you want, that we want to know the total dollar amount that somebody might, approximate total dollar amount that somebody might want to come up with to buy the property, but I, I don't think that we are looking at the type of appraisal that would allow us to go into court and condemn the property. Maybe I'm wrong, I don't know.
Well, that's a good point. I, I think that we thought there was a Bolsochica appraisal that might be a blueprint that we could use, but we have to go back and rethink that a little bit now.
The thinking was with step number three, the RFQ for the appraiser would be ready for distribution March the 14th, that's after a council meeting, which would be March the 12th. And I think my thinking and the committee's thinking would be that, you know, before you even go out with an RFQ, the city council approves that. You know, there is public discussion as to what the parameters are going to be, what we're putting out there and the committee certainly has, you know, its work to do between now and then, making sure that we have our arms around exactly what we're seeking so that we can get exactly, you know, the, the kind of product that we're looking for in the end. It is going to be a complex appraisal. I, I think everyone is certainly understanding of that. And my $100,000 estimate may be off by a good 100%.
It depends on the definition of what you actually ask the appraiser to do.
But I think also that's important then to, to have the outreach in the public and the, and the public input so that, you know, even before you get into the appraisal process and just hiring the appraiser and what kind of appraisal it's going to be is something that's discussed by the interested parties and that there is some, you know, understanding and education and input that takes place. We need to give this process plenty of opportunity for that. If no further comments, the next priority is taking advantage of the latest technology, implement an effective traffic management plan that improves traffic flow throughout the city. This is one that came back from last year. If you look at the steps involved here, we're talking about a, a three-phase signalization improvement process. Phase one is beginning to get underway. We're looking at signal installation at 22 intersections along Coast Highway and Corona Del Mar, MacArthur and Avocado, installation of a temporary traffic management center at City Hall that can be relocated when we get a new city hall, looking at the installation of two video cameras on MacArthur, pedestrian traffic signal at Coast Highway at Iris. Phase number two includes the installation of 14 new controllers at intersection along Jamboree and Bison. And then step three, another 20 intersections in the airport area. So, we're looking at awarding, no, it does, this doesn't have it, awarding phase one construction April the 22nd and completing phase one by the 1st of December of this year, using Measure M money. year, using Measure M money. Phase number two, the 14 intersections along Jamboree and Bison, completing construction by February the 15th of 2009, and that has some financial implications as far as being able to obtain Measure M funds. The phase three then in the airport area, the other 20 intersections, phase two would be completed, again with funding, by February the 15th, 2009. So completing those three phases within about a year from now would be, I think, quite an undertaking, and it would result in, let's see, 26, 46 intersections that would be improved through traffic synchronization.
Is that all the intersections then, with the exception of the Caltrans own signals on Coast Highway?
No, that's probably roughly a third of all the intersections that we have.
I think we have about 115, something like that, in, in the community.
So what's, what's the schedule for those?
Be on phase three?
Yeah.
You know, I would imagine we try to knock off as many as we can. Part of the reason we don't really have a plan, a schedule, is because we don't know exactly what is going to be included in the reauthorized Measure M package in the way of funding, and we wanna take advantage of that because the current program allows us to fund up to 250,000 per phase, so we're, we're looking to get a half a million dollars in this next round. But that's the end of the old Measure M. We'll be going into the new Measure M after that, and we're hoping we can get even more money out of that, so, you know, we'll probably advance roughly another 20 to 40 intersections each year, we hope, if we can get Measure M to fund it.
When you go to phase two and phase three, the 570 and the 800,000, that's coming out of the current Measure M or that's coming out of future Measure M? I always get confused on that.
Yeah, that, those two actually were, there's a round of projects, they're actually a request for projects now, and it's due at the end of this month. And so we're going to apply for two phases, phase two and phase three, under the current Measure M program. And if we're successful, what we are going to do, they're actually, it's a two-year call for projects. Phase two is technically in the, the next year, and the phase three is the following year, but we're confident that OCTA is gonna allow us to advance phase three so we can do it at the same time as phase two.
And so is phase two, since there's a $250,000 limit, is that like two projects put together or something?
Yeah, well, we split the, phase two and phase three are actually split so we could get two applications, and that's pretty much all they're gonna probably allow us to get. So we want, we're trying to maximize getting, you know, about half a million dollars if we can.
Okay, this is where I always get confused, and sorry for asking the question again, but if there's a $250,000 limit per phase and we're getting 570, we have $570,000 in phase two, how is all of the 570 coming from Measure M funds?
Steve, I may have made a mistake on that. Maybe that's just total funding and it, and it isn't all coming, coming from Measure M.
Yeah, I think it is total funding, that is what I'm saying, so.
Okay, so out of each of those, out of phase two and three, only 250 on each of those phases is coming from Measure M and the rest of it's coming from other, other traffic funds?
Yeah, that's correct.
Do we have some Measure M funds that we get from a turnback, or is that just used for maintenance?
We, we can use Measure M local turnback, we can use gas tax, Prop 1B 42 if we ever get it, so we'll leverage it as best we can.
Okay, if there are no further comments?
I did have one further comment on traffic. I'd like to put my placeholder in now for phase four to address the peninsula, if at all possible, and I'm, I actually am serious about that, it, you know, everybody knows about summer traffic, but also this issue of emergency exit and being able to better control that, so I'm, I'm hopeful that we're gonna get moved pretty far up after we finish phase two and three.
Question for you too, Steve, or more comment, and I know that we're gonna get into the weeds in terms of the design, but it seems to me with the location at City Hall being central and we're talking about a temporary control room and, you know, we've got to design this fiber, you know, route into that, has there been any consideration to maybe put that room somewhere in the library so that, you know, our system is now being centralized in that way?
Well, it's really not that much more work for us. Actually, we, our plan was to tie it into the library as a hub and then go from the library to the, to the existing City Hall, so when we build a new City Hall, switching it over isn't gonna be that, that difficult. The equipment is be fully interchangeable.
So we will get that control room though before a new City Hall is built?
That's correct, yeah.
Okay, if there are no further questions, the next council priority is to minimize the adverse impacts of John Wayne Airport through the implementation of the city council's airport policy. Approximately 14 months ago, city council adopted a comprehensive airport policy, and among the things that we are proposing to do this calendar year in order to support that, that policy are to continue to hold monthly aviation committee meetings, hold quarterly joint meetings with AWG, Air Fair, and the city council, I mean, the council aviation committee, continue holding corridor city meetings with city managers and city attorneys and bringing elected officials into that group and trying to explore mechanisms for formalizing the coalition so that we can make it stronger. Number four is hiring a consultant with technical expertise in airport operations and FAA procedures to increase the city's understanding of factors. We've had a lot of discussion about Bob Burnham no longer being our consultant on airport issues, and I think we certainly do have a need to bring somebody on board, so I intend to have a, a recommendation to the council aviation committee that will be coming to the city council prior to March the 15th. We're looking at submitting a go-local grant application with OCTA in partnership with Costa Mesa that would start putting together the pieces that we would need to look at, how we can get, especially South County, but really air passengers from Orange County to outlying airports. And we think that this is the first phase and we can get maybe a hundred thousand dollars for our city and a hundred thousand for Costa Mesa, looking at making a presentation to you about that before the end of the month so that you can review what the grant application would look like. We've had several meetings with the OCTA staff, and we think we can fashion something that will really work for them in terms of the go-local goals and, and also work for us as far as transporting air passengers. That go-local study, if funded, would be finalized by the end of July, and then we would bring those study results back to the city council to see if there's another phase that we wanna go forward with. But nothing in here mentions the settlement agreement that we have in place that is set to expire January the 1st of 2016. We certainly have ongoing discussions with Alan Murphy and, and talking about, you know, when might be the appropriate time in order to begin negotiations. I think the timing is not right, but we wanna be looking at any window that might present itself between now and then, especially if it is to our advantage and we think there's something to be gained by, by picking the right time.
Would, under item four, hire a consultant with technical expertise, couldn't, wouldn't it be good to consider that consultant as being somebody that could perhaps advise us on future extensions of settlement agreement?
You know, that can be something that certainly the aviation committee will be talking about. I think we need to be careful what, what our needs are right now and what our needs are long-term, you know, because there haven't been many people that have been, been involved in the two negotiations as far as our settlement agreement, so, so there is very little knowledge there. And I think we really need to focus on what our needs are right now, and that is, from my opinion, is, is just making sure that we are conversant with any issues that can be raised or anything that the FAA is doing and looking at reconfiguring airspace in Southern California, which they are going to be doing, how that might affect takeoff and landing patterns around John Wayne Airport. We have a study that is ongoing that we hope will be concluded in another month in terms of, are there any potential alternatives for departures, in terms of departure paths? So it, it doesn't look like the timing is right as for negotiations, and I think the best that we can do is just keep up and, not only keep up, but try and be innovative in terms of what we're looking at, in terms of how we can minimize John Wayne's impacts, and there are a number of factors that could go into that.
Councilman Diggle?
As part of the council's policy, one of the provisions is to communicate with the public, and I, it, it seems to me there's a lot to the aviation issues, and, and I think sometimes when people don't hear what the city's doing, you know, they assume that we're in a holding pattern, and that's not true. So I think with our new PIO, that's an area that we can focus on, is to get the word out more in terms of what the city's efforts are and, and some of the, some of the things that we're gonna be undertaking the next year.
In fact, I've had a conversation with Tara in the last two days about one of our videos being with, with Alan Murphy and myself, discussing the air operations at John Wayne and what the settlement agreement means, how we allocate seats, those kinds of issues, you know, that firsthand can, can talk about and, and try and do an education on, making the videos more meaningful and more current. If there are no further questions on that, the next council priority is align the city codes, regulations, and policies with the general plan. Huge effort, ongoing, as some council people know. We're working right now on completing the review, the draft zoning code and LCP implementation plan. A housing element needs to be submitted to the State Department of Housing and Community Development. We think that can be done by June 30th, but Coastal Commission is also involved, they need to approve the land use elements to the coastal land use plan. We think that can happen in May. Council adoption of fees, we're looking at doing that on June the 24th City Council meeting. So it will be continuing, and Mr. Mayor, you can probably speak to this better than anybody sharing his own vacation this month, but it is a substantial resource allocation of, of city staff, and the resources needed, there say that, you know, just with senior planners Jim Campbell and Greg Ramirez, we're looking at dedicating them full-time to this, and that's about 3,600 staff hours, another 175 staff hours from the city attorney and assistant city attorney. A total resource of probably 4,000 to 5,000 staff hours in order to move this along. It's something we need to do, we wanna do that as expeditiously as possible, and it's going to take a major effort on the part of council and staff in order to accomplish what we're saying we want to accomplish in this calendar year.
Yeah, the one major thing that you did not mention was the NEXUS study for the fair share fees, we're gonna have that done by March the 3rd, and the goal is to get it to the council by the 27th of May.
Right, that's item number four.
Item number four.
Turning to the next council priorities, provide more public park and recreation facilities with emphasis on active and water-oriented facilities where appropriate. As you recall, this was something that council came up with last year. We are fully engaged in trying to move this one along. We have listed actions for Mariners Park Restrooms, and it shows the bid award step number two under Mariners Park Restroom because that's the component that is still outstanding bid award in July of 2008, and we're gonna try and, and push that one up as much as possible because with schools starting in September, we wanna make sure that we're as far along as, as we can get before school starts. But also moving forward with Sunset Ridge and engaging the public and coming up with a concept and Coastal Commission permit approval, hopefully by mid-year. This one has, would have the park opening for public use in June in 2012, that's an estimate at this time, and I can already hear Councilman Rozansky thinking that that's about two years too late.
Exactly.
But Mariners Park, at the same time, moving along, Coastal Commission requirement there, council adopting a, a concept, advertise bid award of construction contracts in June of 2011. The Coastal Peak Park is going to be an active park, and that one is being.
Ditto for the timeline on Marina Park.
Well, construction completed and opened by December of 2014. It, it's there, I just didn't want to wave the flag too strongly there. Coastal Peak Park, we should be in city ownership after the Irvine Company construction, and there is a timeframe in which all of the plantings and grass and irrigation system is proven to work and proven to our satisfaction before we would accept it, and we think that it will be open for public use at the beginning of next summer in 2009. So a number of park projects, active park projects moving forward, a lot of planning, a lot of public outreach, a lot of effort, obviously a high priority on the part of council.
You know, one thing that we discussed at the building committee today was combining the redesign of Newport Center Park along with the City Hall project, so that'll be over in that category.
Okay, we're coming.
One question on this one.
Yes.
On the Mariners Park restroom, would it be possible for the bid award to be advanced to May rather than July? It would allow the major site, work, all the excavation to be done during the summer when the kids aren't at school, and the thinking behind it is between the library and the Dover Drive waterline project and the ball field construction, the, the school and the neighborhood's been really impacted by construction, so I wanted to get your thoughts and opinion on moving that bid award to May.
Steve, you're gonna need to.
Yeah, I think that, in fact, that's what Homer had mentioned, that, that we do, we are looking at trying to move that up, and, and I think May is, is doable at this point. The plans are, are more or less complete, and I think we've cleared, we're about to clear the building department for permitting, so we should be able to get it underway.
Okay, sorry about that, I was focused on the written word. Okay, super, thank you.
We're down to the last two priorities, again, not in any numerical order. Implement an effective communication plan which utilizes various communication tools to provide current information to our residents. So the steps here would be, we've hired a public information manager, she came to work, Tara Finnegan, on January the 7th. One of her top priorities is updating the city's existing communication plan, working with the council communication committee, and then bringing those recommendations to the city council as far as updating our communications plan to make sure that the elements in there are what you would like to see. I think the customer satisfaction survey helps us as far as being able to focus on some immediate things that we can do to communicate better with the, with the public. Item number three commits the city manager to a minimum of eight issues of the city manager's newsletter. You know, the first one, I, I think hit the mailboxes this week or last week. The next one will be about, is about two weeks away, and that is wholly dedicated to, to the group homes issue. And the third one will be talking about the customer satisfaction survey and your council priorities. So we do have a map for the newsletters for this calendar year. Also, we want to certainly take a look at our TV programming and start incorporating program enhancements. I think we have some good ideas that we can run by the committee, come up with a list of, of issues that we think are relatively current and that will have high public interest and move forward, but if something, you know, immediately becomes of high public interest, we wanna be able to, to do that and get out programs in a couple of weeks to make sure that they are current. We definitely are saying that we're gonna improve and expand the content of the city's website by March 31st and continue those improvements through the rest of the calendar year, and then on until the, as long as we have a website and something replaces it. Item number eight, create and implement a new council communications policy by June 30th, that includes updated media policy, who talks to the media, incorporates new web and Newport Beach TV policies. So I, I think there are a lot of fronts that we can move on. Number nine is that Tara is going to be coordinating through monthly meetings all of those people that are responsible for communicating with the public, especially written communication with the public. with the public, in order to make sure that our messages are consistent, that there is somebody that is looking at them, reviewing them, to make, make sure that we are presenting the issues in a, in a fair way, in a factual way, and not taking too much time and too much verbiage in order to get that done. So I think, I think we have a, a good plan, and like I say, the customer satisfaction survey helps and gives us some targets to shoot for.
Councilman Hen?
You know, I'd have to say I'm struck by how well these priorities match up with so much of the results in that citizen survey. It's, makes me feel good that we had a fairly good grip on the important issues to start with, so.
And I'll just add that a friend of mine said he got the latest newsletter, read the whole thing to his wife last night, and they were surprised at all the great things that were going on in town. That was very informative.
I never cease-
I got nothing but positive feedback on those-
I never cease to be amazed after those newsletters go out, for the next week, I'll be getting five or six emails a day by people, and, and almost two a day, there'll be one that'll say, gee, you know, I don't think, like one today said, you know, you talk about drunk drivers and how we need to crack down, and yet you have so many bars in Corona Del Moore in such a small area. So, you know, we had that conversation, but, you know, probably four out of five will be very positive and thank you, and supporting that outreach that council is making to the, to the community. So I get a lot of good comments on that. The last priority to review is to develop a process to regularly review and update city fees in order to ensure most fee services pay for themselves. This is a holdover from last year, and we're pretty close to completing this one. We have our draft fee study completed. There's going to be a consultant presentation before the end of the month to the council finance committee on all of the fees, and we're talking about twelve hundred fees, so that list of city fees and where the major changes are going to be. We certainly need to talk about what the philosophy is, which ones that we want to come close to or, or pay for themselves, which ones maybe is youth recreation that we have seventy-five percent or whatever percentage that is that we want to recover. There's going to be a consultant presentation before the council at study session on March the eleventh regarding the, the fee structure and what that services study showed, looking at adoption of the cost recovery ordinance and master fee schedule at the March twenty-fifth council meeting. That ordinance would become effective April the twenty-fourth, with the development-related fees taking place, becoming effective May the twenty-fourth. And then on a regular basis, the finance committee would receive updates from staff as to whether we think that there needs to be any changes or any tweaking of the fee schedule after we get some experience in doing it. So we're very close to completing that one. We should be finished with that one before the new budget year, and then it'll be a continuing process of making sure that we take a regular look, the council finance committee is involved in that, and we're on top of it and make changes when, when changes are, are called for.
Is, is it realistic to present this at a study session on March the eleventh, and that be the first time we see it, and then do the amendments that same night? I mean, what if, what if, what if we have input into that?
Okay, that is a good point. We can move that one to, let me see. Why don't we move that one back one more meeting, and that will change item number four also. The, it'd probably change item number five also by, by two weeks, but you're right, and we'll try and, and get that fee schedule and any accompanying discussion of it, like the staff report, out to you early so that you can have in advance what that report says and where it's coming from in terms of the changes that would be made.
Homer, while we're doing that, we should also build into this process some stakeholder comment period too, whether that's youth sports or the development community. We saw in the, in the community satisfaction survey, people are willing to pay more for, you know, better and faster development services. We need to run these fees and these proposals through everybody that has a stakeholder interest in them before we, we bring them forward.
Good point. Mr. Mayor, that concludes the presentation. That is the last of the twelve priorities, in no particular order. It makes for a very busy year for both council and staff, but I think that we have the resources to be able to accomplish this. In order to do it, we're going to need to be focused, both the city council and, and the staff, but if we can, excuse me, accomplish these steps that we said that we're going to try and do before the end of the calendar year, it'll be a vastly successful year for, for the city council and this organization.
Any other comments or questions for the city manager? Anybody from the public want to comment? Dolores?
I know how to make them go home, don't I, Dolores? I know how to make them go home.
You did a good job, Homer. Hi, my name is Dolores Oding. I live in Newport Beach. Council priority on page one, which is to move forward with a new City Hall. I think maybe you should want to put on there or somewhere what is going to be happening to this existing site, because there are a lot of people out in the, in the city that are very nervous about what could be happening here. And secondly, because there was some, some division on this issue, it would be nice if you had some type of a committee that you put together, like a blue ribbon committee or a committee of architects or a committee with some residents from up above for the no-on-B people and the yes-on-B people to be involved, because there was a lot of money spent by the yes-on-B people to put together a plan. And so that would make sense. That would get the public behind you on, on this, and it would help to stop the division that's going on in the city. The other, I was looking at a thousand hours, and I, so how much does that cost? And also, in regards to the parks, it would be, it would be nice if we could put a community center here on this site and even, and one of the areas was the Peninsula that didn't feel like they had enough police patrol, and I'm sure there's always that feeling that you can't make everybody happy, just Sarah Lee can do that. But in the meantime, when you have the amount of bars and the amount of drug homes, and let's face it, you and I, none of you and I don't live near a thousand people that are in recovery. These people are on death's doorstep most of the time. You do, but you don't live next door to one, so thank God. But other people do, and there's a lot of crime that goes on because of that. And I don't care how you want to look at it, some people say that a lot of the crime isn't logged. I don't really care about that. The bottom line is that the Peninsula could use a poli-, you know, like a police substation. That's one of the things that people are asking for. And with the economy going the way it is, although everything is rosy here, it doesn't mean that things don't change for the amount of crime that could happen also. And that's another issue, Marina Park at twenty-two million dollars. When I went up and got signatures for that park, and it was brought before the council originally, we didn't even have six million dollars. But I spent a lot of my free time during those days at shopping centers and mailers, and there was no way that I ever thought you could put that much concrete on a beach. I come from New England, you know, I've been down to Florida, I've been to Europe at beaches. I don't understand why you need a three-story building. I don't, I mean, I don't know if this is what people, when they think of a park, if this is what they really mean. I know that people don't want a weed park, but I know they don't want, you know, a whole bunch of concrete either. So it would be nice if perhaps you did put, keep this area, you know, like as a community center, and therefore you could at least eliminate one level from the beach. So I just am a little confused by that. But anyway, that's about basically all I have to say. It would be nice to get an up-to-date webpage, but I don't have a problem with the webpage like some people do. And as far as I'm charging an expedite fee so that people could get their stuff done faster, we're a city, we're not a private business, and so basically you can only charge for the cost of service. I didn't think you could put anything else in there. I thought that was kind of like illegal to do that. And so, and if you did pay more to get your job done faster, if you could afford to do that, the person that borrows the money for their house, still, that's all the money they have. So it would be kind of unfair to someone else because you only have a certain amount of time. So if you're willing to pay five thousand dollars more to get your plans through, it's still going to be the same staff. You're not going to have this special super-duper expediter staff person that's just going to work on those. No, it's going to be the same staff. So I don't really think that's even fair to be doing that. I think you have to have a good planning department and you have to, and that has to work for everybody, not just people that are willing to pay more, because I don't even think it's legal. We're not a private business. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, let me just clarify because I think that comment was misinterpreted.
Okay.
The, I think the idea of the survey was that if we paid more development fees, we could hire more people in the planning department and in plan checks so that everybody got their plans done more, just as everybody would pay somewhat higher fee in order to process them. I think that's what the survey was responding to, saying that people wanted to see, not that some people would pay a higher fee than somebody else in order to get faster or go to the head of line.
Okay, any other comments on the priorities? Okay, seeing none. Robinsons, we're going to recess to closed session again. Do we do the motion for reconsideration now or after we come back and do an official adjournment or how's that work?
Yeah, I would, I would go ahead and save the motion for reconsideration to reconvene after we complete closed session. You could do that item and then adjourn for the evening.
Okay, well, we're going to adjourn in memory of Virginia Herberts, and Dawn, do you want to read that remembrance before we go into our closed session?
Thank you. Over the years, particularly when I was in the public works department, it seems like road builders and people that like trees sometimes differ in opinions, and I came across Virginia Herberts many different times when she would come in and want to comment on, on our threat to remove a tree, and she was, she was very active. This is some of the information that came out of, out of the paper. Virginia Herberts passed away quietly on January twenty-ninth, two weeks after celebrating her eightieth birthday. She is survived by her husband Curtis Herberts, husband of sixty-two years, actually, three children, grandchildren, and great-grandchildren. She loved birds, trees, and nature and was dedicated to preserving and enhancing the natural beauty of Newport Beach. For many years, she served as a commissioner on the City of Newport Beach Parks and Beaches Recreation Commission. She was the founder and first chairman of the Tree Subcommittee of that commission and worked passionately entire, I can tell you, she worked very passionately, tirelessly to preserve the trees in our city. She was very inspirational on the commission and responsible for having Newport Beach designated as a Tree City USA. She was honored by SPON with the Frank and Frances Robin Environmental Award for her Urban Forest Presentation. She was involved in many other community activities as well as a longtime support for the Philharmonic Society of Orange County. She will be missed by all of us, particularly her family and friends. Thank you.
Okay, we'll, we'll recess to closed session.